All right, gentlemen, it's a little past one. Thank you everybody for coming. We'll open up the budget workshop scheduled and advertised. Open it with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is states, one nation, indivisible, just as justice for all.
Sean, you want to do that invitation?
Sure. Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us all to gather here today. Thank you for this beautiful weather we're having. If His will move us on into spring. Uh, thank you for the wonderful time we had this weekend with the tractor parade honoring Amia's farmers, the fallen farmers, as well as just having a good time and allowing the community to come together for, for some fun. Uh, thank you for keeping us all safe and for everybody that was willing to come out and participate. We ask that you watch over us today as we go through the county's business with this budget. Amen.
Amen.
All right, gentlemen, you've got a, you've got the two agendas for today and tomorrow. Is everybody okay with those? Yeah, no complaints, we'll move on with those. I do, I will, will say, I would, I do anticipate us having a meeting next week to kind of wrap up things. Today, tomorrow, I think we give the department here is our full attention to listen and see what they want, or to ask the requesting, and maybe give us a couple, three, four days to, and over the weekend to process it, and then we reconvene in another workshop next Tuesday, next the twenty eighth. And then we'll get into our discussion, and I, I will hope we can do it all that day. Being it would just be us talking, do we wanna, are we good with a one o'clock to five o'clock and the twenty eighth also? Would it, I hate to leave you out, and would it help if we?
It won't matter, I couldn't block two weeks from work, so.
Okay. All right, well, we'll, we'll plan on the twenty eighth. Would the Monday work better for you? Okay. Well, just get your feedback back to us. All right. Mr. Wurrell, you are number one on the list with the budget presentation.
So, uh, this is the proposed, um, budget based on department request. Um, they, the document was formulated as presented by the department managers, by community and regional organization requests, trended and forecasted revenue, um, expense trends. So, no changes were made to department requests, they're, they're formulated as presented, so. Um, some important notes that I'm gonna go over first. Real property, uh, some of the cost drivers that are influencing the budget a little bit here, and, uh, some market, um, factors. We're gonna start with the real property. So, one of the items to note here is that the real estate tax rate is based on the equalized, um, rate after the 2023 reassessment. Um, there was no increase to real estate tax rate. Um, the equalized rate is thirty eight cents per one hundred dollar valuation. Uh, there was a thirty eight percent increase to the real estate, um, book values. It went from one point three billion to one point eight billion. Assess. And this is based on one hundred and one percent of the previous year, so our current year tax levies, which, um, was, it's going from six point eight million to six point nine million in real estate revenue. Cost drivers. Um, personnel is one of your cost drivers. We have a, um, five percent cost of living adjustment to salaries and wages. Um, this is in line with, um, the combo recommendation. We are also in line with the thirteen dollars per hour minimum wage. There is a request for five new positions. Uh, funding request for one status position in the sanitary district is not currently funded, but the position has been there in the past. Um, and Daryl Golf will, um, give y'all some more information on that, that one particular, um, position. There are also, um, a request for four new deputies from the sheriff's department. Again, they will be presenting at one thirty today, and they will have some more information for you guys for those. And, um, Derek Golf is also requesting one additional custodian, um, in the general fund. Um, there are various in-band adjustment requests per department managers, so that would be in addition to any certifications in coal. Any additional, um, in-band adjustments. Um, apartment request, um, there's some requests for expanding operations that would require additional resources. The department managers will be touching on those in their presentations. They'll be, um, getting all a brief overview of those changing operations and the impact that that will have on their department budgets. Education being your, another one of your major cost drivers, um, this is of course, Media County Public Schools. Their request is for an additional, or additional local contribution, um, over what was appropriated this year. They are requesting a, or planning for an eight percent, um, cost of living and step adjustment to their personnel. Continuing on with the cost drivers, um, with education, the projected, um, required local effort per department of education, and this is as of February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, is a projected amount of four million, five hundred eleven thousand, two hundred and forty dollars from the county. Projected average daily membership or A B M per the department of education as well, as of February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, stands at one thousand four hundred eighty-eight point one five. Um, projected A B M per the Media County Public Schools, they're projecting one thousand five hundred seventy-five, and that number was as of February seventeen, twenty twenty-three. Their request for low contribution totals eight point four billion dollars, or eight million, four hundred seventy-five thousand, nine hundred fifty-seven dollars. That includes operational and textbook contributions, um, which doing the comparison between what the D U E, D O E is projecting versus what's being requested, that's a hundred eighty-seven point nine percent of the required book value. That's an increase of one million, fifty thousand, five hundred eighty dollars from current year to F Y twenty-four. Some market factors that we're contending with. We have the consumer price index, the twelve month all-time, all, all items index increased six percent since March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, and over the twenty-four month, over two-year period, um, as of March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, consumer price indexes increased fourteen point five percent. We're dealing with that, um, across the board expenses, personnel costs. Vehicle wholesale prices have decreased twelve percent. In other words, personal property values have decreased twelve percent. Um, we have an expected reduction in landfill revenue due to some market changes. We, um, unfortunately got some, some bad news on that front, so we're not project, or expecting to generate the same amount of money that we have been the last few years. Uh, we are also uh, expecting a reduction in agricultural real estate book values due to market changes, also that Tyson's contract is kind of leading that, so we are projecting about a seventy percent in decrease, um, per the commission revenue um, in those particular properties, um, when they become inactive, if they do become inactive. And we are also experiencing, again, with the consumer price index, increased operating expenses, uh, with inflation and just normal market, um, market trends. Now, I'm gonna get into some of the, uh, budget breakdown for fund. Uh, I'm gonna talk about your three major funds, the general fund, um, capital improvement fund, and the sanitary district fund. We're gonna start with the general fund. We are looking expenditures of fifteen million to, uh, five hundred twenty-nine thousand, five hundred fifty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents, which equates to a nineteen point seventeen percent increase from last year, or the current year. Um, our debt service activity totals four hundred eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred eighty-six dollars. That's right in line with normal activity. Um, you see this less than a one percent increase, um, we're right in line with what we would expect. Um, department of social services contribution, um, that totals two million, two hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred fourteen dollars, which equates to a ten point five, six percent increase over the current year budget. We're looking at the transfer to the sanitary district of four hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred four dollars, which is a fifty-seven point two percent, um, increase over last year. Um, our transfer to the county school system would be eight point, or eight billion, four hundred seventy-five thousand, nine hundred fifty-seven dollars, which equates to a fourteen point two two percent increase. And the request for, uh, five new positions, I touched a little bit on that earlier, and that would be, uh, here's some of the information, that the impact that would be on general. Um, the four additional deputies, their budget and the max salary would should be at the top of the requested band, fifty-nine thousand, five hundred annually, but four fringe benefits. One public works, um, additional custodian, budget at the max salary of thirty-seven thousand dollars before. We'll get into the capital improvement plan at this point. Um, expected loss of landfill revenue due to market changes, so we're, um, expecting a reduction in the host fees that we receive from the landfill. Um, typically, activity has been about three point three million years a year with host fees. We're at, uh, budgeting at two point five with an expected loss revenue there. That's a decrease of eight and a thousand dollars. Um, grants totaling one point three seven five million. Um, we're expecting one million dollar grant for a radio project and a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar USDA grant for the Wells Fargo building. That's an ongoing project. Total project request total, um, thirteen point nine million, and that's based on the planning commissions, um, I'm sorry, that, that's after the, uh, Media County Public School Systems withdrawal of their projects, excluding the, um, boat tech center. So, the total project request would be thirteen point nine million. And the priority recommendation provided by the planning commission that was provided as part of the appendix, that amount is higher if we were to decide to do all of the projects that were recommended by the planning commission in F Y twenty-four, that number was closer to just under seventeen million. Okay, sanitary district, not a whole lot going on here. It's pretty, um, normal activity there, aside from, um, the request for funding for an established position as chief water treatment operator. Um, that would be, um, a position that has been in the past, but for this number of years has not been funded. Um, so Daryl Golf will have some more information on that for you guys, um, during this presentation. Dead activity is normal. Uh, we have a little bit of debt there in the, um, sanitary district that totaled with one hundred thirty thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. Um, adjustments to fees and consideration of market norms, so trying to get our fees in line with what the market's doing. Um, and there are no major operational changes in the sanitary district. This is a, um, pie graph for you guys to, um, see where revenues and expenditures, what percentage of those numbers are, um, allocated to like local revenue, state, federal, um, revenue, and department requests versus non-departmental expenditures, um, any kind of public schools expenditures, and what slice of the overall pie they get. Um, so the general funds, um, total department expenditures, twenty-six percent of overall expenditures. Um, the Media County Public School System is, uh, forty-four percent. Um, capital improvement plan is twenty-three percent. Sanitary district accounts for two percent of the overall budget. Department of Social Services would be four percent, and total non-departmental expenditures is one percent or less. I'm gonna back up a little bit, back to the general funds breakdown. You see, um, the difference between our revenues and our expenditures as presented by the department managers leaves a deficit of, um, four million dollars, so we have a little bit of work to do there. And that concludes the broad overview points, um, of the budget, and I will be happy to answer any questions that y'all may have up front. Um, our first presentation, um, is scheduled for one thirty, so we have about fifteen minutes in between, um, now and when that should arrive. Oh, they're here, okay. We can get started with, like, we're answering questions.
I have one question. Could you, or Mr. Harvey, talk about the, the proffer situation on the progressive community, how that may affect us? Will it?
Cash proffer is kept in a separate one, so it's not general fund activity.
Okay.
Or sanitary district, or, uh, except capital. It's totally set, kept at fifty-five.
Okay. All right, any other homeowners have any questions?
Not used, I mean, that's a good point, though, that David's bringing up. We have not used any of those funds, and I have recollected last up with yours. It's not really value, I'm just letting, I know they're separate and they have to be used for certain purposes, but there's no reason they can't be used, as long as the purpose is alive. We just keep more and more money just sitting in the bank every year. Thoughtful about that.
Can we get a projection of how much money is in that proffer account, land item?
I can give you the number as of, um, two twenty-eight, twenty-three.
Okay.
And they all, everything in there have the same criteria for usage, or is there variation?
I don't believe there's any, um, differences between what's there, um.
I think they're all at the same, uh, radius. Radio's actually working. In the next sixty days, census is taking us out of the high road. Prove projects down, listen to the proper to go. Touching with Danielle and Brady about it affects our ability to spend what we want. That's census.
There's strengths attached to that?
Yes. Proppers are listed. With all brings to the eastern community. Educated for those type.
Is public service following that? Police, fire, rescue?
I think.
So that would be.
That money's not being used, if that would open up some money for that, I mean, could they need a rest?
People need more services.
That's true.
And you're saying it impacts the ability to request a proffer in the, in the future. I haven't ever heard that it restricts the ability for someone to offer proffers, though.
That's what I was trying to say. You can offer, you said, can't. This is where we can.
Require.
Require. Right, right, right.
So, we could egg them on a little bit, saying, you know, this would help if you wanna offer this and all. Yeah.
Yeah, because if we're bringing up concerns that are related to growth and, and option for them, how to solve it, is, is, yeah, right, yeah.
Donate to the kitty.
Do you have a rough ass moment with that, Mr.? Can that be looked up while we're talking?
I will certainly try.
Yeah, just ballpark figure, I mean.
Network security will work with that, but I would definitely try.
Okay, any more questions? All right, we'll jump into the first department presentation. Sheriff, Mr. Redd. Thank you. Um, did y'all, I'm gonna skip the first part. Somewhere I put the first part says. December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, we had an incident, that kind of goes through some of the ideas and things that some knew about. Over the past, um, over the past sixteen years, I can't say, you know, say my staff and I've always been grateful because it's always worked with us. No matter what, and we've always come out, I would say to the good, always most appreciable with. Anything. Just one of the most important things is questioning an increase to the minimum base pay of compression rates for current state. This increase will bring all staff somewhere in the mid-range of the salary study, by raising the minimum base pay, and I hope that's to be able to attract certified deputies to our current base pay. We just don't get a lot of, uh, mild, don't get a lot of certified people. Chief deputy can talk a little more to the, to the salary stuff, wants to get better. merit raise of the earned by the individual employee. After this little incident that happened in December, they talked to some. We were requesting four new positions. Four new deputy positions, they can have, they can help the current staffing, can get us the, really, the minimum staffing's double. Because we'll back up the calls for service, for officer and the civic safety. And on the short staff, the ability for these people, we need their annual lead to be able to take off, kind of limited, because we just gotta have. And also that affects their ability sometime to attend training outside of what, pray or do. I mean, there's a lot of good training out there for these deputies, but can't go because they have to work, and that's, and that's that's one reason they can't. Also, it will cut down on our compensation time and overtime. And it helps us be more proactive than it does reactive to everything. Um, the next one you'll see is, you'll see some blue and green graphs, and these are just certain deputies here, the numbers underneath the graphs represent the employee numbers. And it shows the blue represents annual time versus holiday time, and what we get is what they get. And the blue represents the amount of annual time that they have on the books, think about it. As well as the green for the, uh, holiday time. This next page, it also says, it also shows with the different colors how many hours are spent by some of these deputies doing the E C O and the P E O, which means once a person is sent to the hospital, is sent across roads and goes to the hospital, waiting, place that's somewhere. Shows that these deputies are spending two, three, or four days that I have to send two down there each time. Shows that these deputies are spending two, three, or four days that I have to send two down there each time, and they're like, you know, hours at a time. Like I say, the current minimum helps up, it just takes a long time to get placement for some people. Next, the next, um, page is. Dance control, what we do. It's July first, twenty two, and it shows up February twenty eighth, it shows the amount of, uh. Sumses and the rest that have been made during that time. Showing, and it's what it shows is the importance of that program. Self and the citizens here, shows that it's working. And the next page, it shows, it's, uh, this came from probably from the Virginia Highway. It's from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty one, and it shows the different, uh. Traffic fatalities, which is class B, and some by alcohol, and it shows the different years, and it's. That's two thousand eighteen, you can see it's going trended down through twenty one. But it does show that that program. I guess the important thing that we're asking for is we're asking for the. Big raises to help us. Crack more certified, maybe. Better. People. Um, and in, in that, it also aggressively compression. Part of it, because. Current salary, our current starting salary, we wanted to get to current, our salary of fifty two thousand, starting salary, which is. Somewhat in line with the major accounts, most all of them in there. Fifty or fifty or above. Yes. And, um, that was, I don't have to speak to it.
But, like you said, we really want to be, talk to some of you. People that have been to track, swing the opposite. You know, why if you're, some people. You know, we. I was like, oh, sure, that also might be. But sometimes. Not that much. And doing that, we want to.
But pressure that is. It keeps the people we have here. We try, we try to take care of them, so that we know what to do. But then it's happened in the past. Somebody here, they train, they stay for a couple of years, and then they go up to somewhere else that's paid. It's always paid because people are used, sometimes it's, it's other working conditions, especially. Down that we had, every person twelve hours at a time. Then you get a T O or something to come in, which that, which you'd have to solve, they're off, the people that are off to come in, and that. Which you just, you know, some of these people are working their days, and they're all days too, because this is the way it works. It's just the way you have. It's not just those, those that do it, it's all of us, even the admin people. Our chefs, we do all of a sudden. T O and all of them. Especially, you know, sometimes you have to with everybody else, they just don't have it, they, they have other obligations, but.
This sort of problem will be an ongoing problem all the time, because our location to Chesterfield and Powhatan and all who. Will consider larger counties, more rich counties than we are, so.
Well, it, it, it probably could in the future. This would, this would probably settle for a while, because everybody, that's. Where everybody is now, with home court. Can't compete with Chesterfield, and, um. The difference between us and the Chesterfield Sheriff's Office is, we do law enforcement, they don't. They, uh, all they do is jail enforcement, civil process, and. T O's and stuff like that. They don't do L E part and P E. Just because of their locality, that's why they, you know, salaries is good to me.
That's the one in the board, probably, following, big bad guys. But y'all have done it for so many years. But it has to be solid, it's solid then.
You going from four G to five G, which you want?
There's, there's a lot of benefits in being able to hire certified people, I mean, you already have a deputy that could basically go on the street. You're not paying for academy training, I mean, you know, there's a lot of cost savings. That we're having to expend now.
Yes, the cost saving, savings is, is, you know, it's, you send somebody to the academy, they're in the academy for six months. They're in, they're F T U field training for six weeks or more. And, um, it's, it's just a long process. And, uh, because we only, you know, you hire somebody like that that is not certified. You only have twelve months to get that person certified, that's, that's it. So, hiring a certified person that's already been through there, within two weeks or so. They're all, they're out doing, they're out working, so that's, that's the big thing.
With this, with the full positions, would the special enforcement still be? Out there, would still be a?
Yes.
They would still be doing that?
They still be doing that.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be done on their all time.
That, that's done on their all time anyway, if they so, if they so choose, so. But right now, um. You know, they are, they're out there working. We have, uh. We have these, um, deputies that are out there now, I mean. We have some that are. They're, they're, some of them really good about arresting the DUIs here, I mean, they, they've really done a really good job on that. Because they're out there patrolling, they're out there getting around, and they're not just out here on three sixty, they're out there all over the counties, that's where these arrests are taking place. So it shows that they're not just out here. You know, down the highway, they're, and they're out for everybody to see. And to be honest with you, if, you know, we, we are asking for four, four positions, I wouldn't ask if I didn't really think they were important. But I also know that the people I have, they're all good people, and. Push come to shove. You take care of who you have here, while you're, you know, take care of them first. But, like I say, the four people are needed, it's not like, it's not a need, it's not, it's not a want, it's a need, so. You know, that's, that's something that.
Those four positions, is that budgeted for four new patrol vehicles, equipment, and everything as well?
Yes.
That's the reason I asked about the proffers, because those are, those are one-time expenses. Large expenses that could be offset by another account that we have, I mean, that. That makes a, that puts a big dent in the initial.
It does.
Have y'all had individuals come by and wanted to know if you was hiring, but you had to tell them, we had to wait the budget time to see how the finances was, or I could answer that question? I mean, you know, somebody out the blue say, hey, are you looking for another deputy?
No.
I'm just curious, something.
I mean, if we have an opening.
We do have one opening.
Now, if anybody's going to apply. Yeah, they want more money, then that might be a factor, but. We, we do have a position open now, or anybody's looking to apply for, but we're limited to the week and also that position.
And in the past, it's just, you know. It's, uh, you don't get the amount of applicants that you think you would. I mean, it's just, for the simple reason, some people just don't want to do, do this job. I mean. You know, certain way things have kind of evolved here, it's hard to find sometimes people that want to do the job.
We just watch TV, and we see how they're unappreciated, in Jersey. Law enforcement is in a lot of areas.
I like the way you, you're trying to get to minimum staff. We haven't got to the minimum yet.
No.
If we get to the minimum, work towards the minimum, then that gives us room to, to upgrade to five G, like, you know, but we gotta, we gotta get to the four G first, like Dexter explained.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Got any questions for the sheriff?
I get pretty good. Think we did find a number for you. Four of them, under the Tracert account, open your quarter. Line for cash proffer. Got eight hundred eighty one thousand, one thirteen dollars, fifty four cents in. Whether that's all of this, I don't know. I bet seven one six cash proffer.
All right, couple police cars.
Eighty one.
Can you, can you also give us the, the strengths or the requirements we have to stay in, so we, we can have, we want to play about a role, so we make sure we. Right. Any else, anything for the sheriff?
Other than I, um, well, I just, yeah, I want to thank you for what y'all did Saturday for the community and all. Hey, they didn't have no chance, hey, yeah, I mean, we really appreciate it.
Well, I can tell you that was a. It was an awesome event, just, you know, from the beginning, really didn't know how it was going to turn out, but I can tell you, it turned out. That was an excellent, excellent thing.
Way of just communicating.
It is.
It's all the way about.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All righty, our next department, Department of Social Services. Ms. Pullen, how are you today?
I'm well, and hope you all are too. Nice to be here this afternoon. I'm not sure, uh, what you have in front of you, I hope it's, uh, do they have the budget that I submitted? Okay, good, I figured they would. Um, so basically, um, there are not a lot of new initiatives in this budget, there are no new, um. Personnel, um. There, it, I did include, because at, at the time the budget was, uh, submitted. I used the best estimate, and there was a seven percent increase, I believe, approved in both houses. Of the legislature for state-supported increases, and so that is included in this budget. Whether that's going to be final, that's up to you all, but, um, it is included in the budget.
Ms, Ms. Pullen, can I interrupt?
Sure.
Now, if you have a line, line number for, for social services, I'm having one time sign.
Yeah, me too. Sure, um, yes, their, um, their number, if you're looking in section one. On the workbook, uh, their. Figure is reserved for social services, which is under the general fund one hundred, it's about the fourth lineup from change of fund balance. Under the general fund, two point two million dollars, two point two seven two six point four.
Okay.
Their, um, line item budget was also included in the appendix.
No.
If you need that, I can definitely.
I got it now. Sorry, my name is.
Oh, no, you're fine, I'm glad you, uh, got those numbers, um. There's also, uh, three retirements that are probably looming, um, in the next year that were included in the budget. And we included them at their max, uh, in case anybody went the whole year through, um, of course. We could save money if people were, you know, retired earlier in the year, but, um. It, the, what's included in the budget is the max. We did have to lash this past year, um, hire a position on. Full time that had been part time, so it, it's going to continue full time, we could not fill the position on a part time basis. It went months vacant, and so, um. With the approval of our administrative board, we did go ahead finally and advertise it as a full time position. But that, that happened, though, in this budget year, so, um, it's coming out of this budget, and we're able to handle it. Because we've had some vacancies this year. So, um. There's no new initiatives, like I said, not for buying cars, not for big, uh, increases, we did put a little bit money of money in there, um. For, uh, phone service, but we're not sure how that's going to impact us, because, uh, we understand the county's going to get a new phone system. So it may be something that's going to go in our cost allocation plan, but we did put a little bit of money in the budget for direct service, ju- just in case we needed to. Um, things are, like, you know, things are going up, so we included some little bit of increases in some of our services and, um. Support. Supplies, those kinds of things, we did have one big increase, it doesn't affect the local share that much. But it doesn't, but impact the total appropriation, and I did want to point that out to you. Do they have this, okay. So on, uh, it's our, it's called our budget form BF one. And it looks like this. I don't know if yours is multicolored like that, but it kind of has the bottom line budget on it. Um. Under the heading marked assistances in bold on the right, it's the first one under the budget lines. There is a budget line for four E foster care, it's number eight eleven. You found that?
Yes. It's not in this.
It's not in that packet. Okay, I'm sorry. Well, let me, let me just kind of just briefly tell you, uh, we had no money in this budget line last year because the state.
The pack called appendix A, it's age twenty.
Oh, is it?
The one you said.
Yes, uh-huh. You found it. Okay. And it's, do you see under assistances where it says eight eleven for E foster care?
Yeah, fifty-three thousand.
Yes. Uh, initially, we got no allocation from the state on that because they took a slice in time, uh, so to speak. Uh, and if we did not have any of those types of cases by March of last year, they gave us no money for this budget line. Well, just after March, we got two children in our custody, two teenagers. Um, and it, we had to request money from the state, which they gave us. And we were able to cover it again because we had vacancies. But, um, this line item, as you can see, that middle line where all the X's are, there's no local share in it. What it means is we have to appropriate the money in order for us to spend it, but you get it, all of it back from the state reimbursed. So it raises our appropriation when we have to have it in there. But this does not affect the local share because you will get it back, get it back.
So speaking of that, so Josh, on the, you know, summary page, you've got reserve at two point two, which I see is the total. But the county shares only seven hundred and nine thousand, so.
Yeah, so the, the expenditure is, um, appropriated a hundred percent. So the two million, two hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred fourteen dollars is, is appropriated to the, um, general fund budget in entirety. And then we receive state aid over the course of the year that offsets the rest of those expenses minus the any local match that we have.
So are you reflecting those then? Here, where do we see that?
That would be, the state aid would be under the general fund revenues of the twenty-three million, one hundred sixty thousand. Um, a more detailed cost break, or a revenue breakdown is on section two. Um, and you will see that will be under, um, state aid category, would be part of that one point. I believe the state aid categorical, uh, uh, part of that one point two million dollar revenue line item for F one twenty-four.
We report our expenditures monthly to the state and they reimburse the county on a monthly basis, based on our expenditures and what the local match is.
Sorry, which one did you make it fall on? Which of those?
I believe it is state aid categorical, which is, um, under one hundred, section two.
Yeah. So one point two eight six.
Yeah, and that could include other, um, categorical aid for other programs as well. Um, but I, if, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Because it's less though than the estimate that is on Martha's form as well as wondering. So her estimate on this EF one form is per state of one point five six. I just want to make sure it's full, it's all accounted for there.
I would definitely repeat that, and if, um, I have a wrong number in there, I would definitely make an adjustment.
Can we get a copy of that form to bring them?
There. It's in, it's in what, with what Josh gave us. It's appendix A, H one.
Okay.
That's the appendix, um, A, B, and C have all the individual departments and agencies and others.
I'd be happy to answer, I'd be happy to answer any question, try to, try to a- answer any questions you may have about the budget.
Well, so in summary, it's two hundred and eleven thousand greater than last year's budget, is that what I'm reading? But not all of that is state. I mean, sorry, not all of that is local.
Correct.
Not really easy for me at least to see unless what increase that is to the local portion.
It would be per the percentage that the county, uh, is matched correct. So whatever percentage of that, our local matches would be the percentage of that two eleven.
Uh, it's not quite as easy as that because some of these things have a higher match rate than others. And so it gets, that's kind of confusing it. But, um, I'm thinking, Mr. Easter, um, that you're looking at the middle column here.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you want to know the difference between this year and what we, the draft budget for next year is local, you look at that middle column and it's a difference between the seven hundred thousand and nine and the six hundred and eighteen, uh, six hundred and eighteen thousand. That's the.
Ninety, well, ninety-one thousand.
Approximately, yes. That's correct.
Thank you. That's a great, for a budget this size, that's a pretty small difference.
So it's ninety-one thousand more for this budget, see?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. As you know, um, the public health emergency, uh, according to the federal government, is going to end on May eleventh. And everything's opening back up again. Um, of course, our office has been open for quite some time, but, um, one of the things that's going to impact this is that all the renewals that we were told we didn't have to do because of the public health emergency, they're going to have to be caught up now in the next year, in the next calendar year from May forward. And so that's going to put a whole lot of more stress on the workers in the department who handle the benefits, who handle the benefits. But, uh, it's going to be done over a year period, so we can space it out every month. And we think we've got a pretty, oh, excuse me, we think we've got a pretty good handle on making that work. So. And people will have their benefits reduced. And I think you may have been reading about that because during the public health emergency, the feds said, raise everybody's benefit to the max for the, the household size. Everybody got the maximum SNAP benefits allowable. So say you were in a household that was getting thirty dollars a month. What used to be called food stamps, it's called SNAP benefits now. If you were in a household that was getting thirty dollars a month, SNAP benefits during the public health emergency, because of the Fed action, nothing that the state or local did, it went to about maybe three hundred. So they were, went from thirty dollars a month to three hundred dollars a month. And when the federal health, when the public health emergency ends, they'll revert back to whatever's appropriate yet for that household size. And so that's going to be a big challenge facing the department because people have gotten used to, as you can imagine, you know, having more benefits and will have to deal with less benefits. So we've alerted the, uh, food banks and other sources of supplemental food. To expect this to be coming, some churches, um, because it's, uh, it's going to be, but a hard, a hard time for people to make this adjustment, but it has to be made. So. Those are some things coming up.
A number of roughly how many families did, in, uh?
Oh, my goodness.
Don't worry, I mean.
Yeah. I'm trying to think how many house, households, uh, the latest we got. I'm thinking it's around eight hundred and some, roughly eight hundred households. And some of them are households of one person and some of them are households with more, a lot more than that.
Yeah, but a lot of people.
Yes, but you know how that works. It's not until the rubber hits the road that people get, start getting upset. And so, yeah. I know some people are aware of it and are trying to do something about it, but sometimes it just, you know.
So what, what happened to them? Just, just a question, you know, um, if they couldn't find some help and they needed it and they don't qualify in that, but I, I mean, you follow where I'm trying to come from.
Right, right.
Get no food from the food bank or kind of pork and bean or whatever. And suddenly lowered into this and they have four kids there.
Right.
Something to eat for supper.
Well, that's a good question because we rely on local, um, charities, food banks, uh, churches. And if that's not in place, we can't, we can't conjure it up. And that's what I'm saying.
My, my concern was maybe the local food bank and charities are being stretched to the limit. And did somebody new pops in, I mean, I reckon it's up to the community, community to come together and say, hey, we got to provide some food for his family today. He's starving.
And that happens sometimes too. But to my knowledge right now, our partners in the community, which are the churches and the food banks, um, and even meals on wheels and the, and those kinds of operations, um, are gearing up for the challenge. And I feel like, I feel like it'll be met, but you're right. If, if that fails, then it's up to us to do something in the community to help provide.
My, my point trying to, to make here is should we have a contingency plan in case something, hopefully pray to God it never happens, that we could help these people out, you know, county-wise? I'm not talking about bailing them out and all, but you know.
Feed them.
Feed them. I mean, because we don't know, things aren't as brave as some people think they are. And everybody's being pulled, you know what I'm saying?
Well, we ha- we have to be careful about providing it directly from the county because we went through this, some of the challenges with the ARBA funds. It, it requires all, it's very complicated. But we already give funds to a lot of these associations and organizations like the food bank and others. So what we can do is look at our, the county's donations to these organizations and see if we're able to help more or what they.
Well, the point, yeah, I understand. The point I was just trying to make, maybe we have a little bank right here for emergency only, not, never be touched unless we ever got to a critical situation.
We have in our office, a pool of miscellaneous funds. It's not, but it's not much, it's not much. But we could help people out on a, you know, an emergency type basis.
Well, that's good.
For a while.
And that's all the, that is the purpose of our existing reserve accounts too, are for emergencies like that. If we start adding to it, then we just save more and more. So we've got such a high reserve balance compared to other counties.
We don't want nobody go out if they had to.
No, thank you. No.
That looked at for names.
That's right.
Any more questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Have a good afternoon.
You say.
That brings to the commissioner of revenue.
At two thirty.
Yeah, we're about half an hour ahead scheduled.
Okay. Will? Definitely, are you, are you ready for yours?
I'm not in the scathing, Mr. Phelps.
Okay.
While we're in between, can I ask a question? Um, I can't find where any of these materials are on the county's website.
Yep, I suppose.
Yeah, so the point requires that whenever the materials are distributed to the board, they have to be made published at the exact same time. And I can't find any of it published on.
They haven't been published.
I'm currently working on it through Southern Clerk. I'm in the process of making it happen.
All right. So just keep that in mind for future. It has to be when they're provided to us, not at the time of the meeting. So should have been like last week when they first started them out to us. And then like the sheriff's handout has to be electronic. So we got that now, so that has to be added now. Dexter, one place you can look to for some of that, uh, funding for other nonprofits.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so Crossroads significantly reduced its requests on Amelia this year. Uh, Amelia's been contributing sixty-nine thousand a year. The new request is for slightly less than thirty thousand. Because Amelia's been paying the second highest of the counties. And I brought this up when other nonprofits come in, it's very important that the requests be proportionate. So as the Crossroads chair, I redid a new methodology this year. So for example, Amelia uses eight percent of all the visits to Crossroads. So of the total county portions, then Amelia is being asked for eight percent. I think that's really important for us to look at across all these organizations. Like I just saw some where we're, we're being asked to contribute the same amount as Prince Edward and other really large counties. Not that we shouldn't contribute, but it needs to be a fair contribution based on the services that we receive back.
That's very true.
So anyway, you've got thirty-nine thousand less that Crossroads is asking for this year than what the county's been contributing. So that community group's population should be down.
Yeah, our systems are going. How much do we get out of that butt fist on?
I, I think that's a great example.
And I know we do need to historically be more as well, so that's.
Yeah, there are questions in here too. So that whole package, the appendix B, all, all of B are the, the nonprofit groups. Right. There you go. Talked to the PMI or that for this council, but we're agreed to support them and so on. That's a good example where our requested funding is the exact same as Prince Edward.
Where they're located, the.
And where the majority of their clients come from, yeah. Yeah, we're the only, oh, we are only county other than Farmington that we're asking for ten thousand. So it could be that our percentages do, we just don't know based on what they gave, what the percentage is.
All right, you ready, Lord?
I'm ready.
All right.
I don't really have anything for y'all. Um, I'm not asking for any money or any more money. My budget is actually going to go down fifteen thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars this year, and that's with the cost of living figured in. Um, I basically just went ahead and signed up so that if y'all had any questions for me, I could go ahead and address them.
You could pass the figures to other departments, that'd be awesome.
I assume that's primarily because of retirement and so therefore.
Right. So that was the. Correct. That was the part-time money that I got last year for Jenny. Um, so that's gone. Um, and then I only asked for a small increase on, um, like paper and postage because postage has gone up and stuff like that. So my total increase on supplies is two thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars, which would be like the five percent that we were cut last year.
And then total, or is that still the main percent?
Still, right. Still fifteen down.
Yeah, it's one lot.
I'm not doubting what you're saying. The line I'm looking at, Josh can help me with this, is an increase from last year. What is, what am I missing? This is what I'm looking at.
The operating expenses in the commissioner's.
Very well, Lord, we just want to make sure we, things is saying on everybody.
Yeah, so, um, the costs are probably related to changes in insurance. There is also the five percent comp board adjustment in the salaries and five percent proposed COA for salaries and wages. So that has actually made the budget salary-wise personnel costs go up by five percent. But I think there is also some differences in the salaries between Denise and the others. So my assumption is, it has to be, there's something in there that, um, with the insurance, unemployment insurance or workers' compensation has also have changed. So I would be glad to look into that a little more in depth, but.
It's showing seventeen percent increase.
Do you have, um. Salaries on the top one?
Fifty-four.
Twenty twenty-three was two twenty-six and I would count, that's what I sent you this morning, three twenty.
All that was. So we can't do it.
Cause I had insurance at this point.
If it's live, just like your question about the other farm, all that on the screen.
Yeah, so I checked it. Salaries on the bottom. And then fringes is what's, salary's gonna be plus the fridge. So those two will be their salary. She said she would be thirty-seven.
So let me see, this should be.
So Denise is still in there for fifty-two. She needs to come out. So that's put me over.
So what did you have? You had two seventy-two, right? And so fifty-two will come out, so it'll be the two twenty. Okay, cool.
I apologize. That's a mistake on my part. Um, Denise's salary was left in the calculation. So that salary, that line item is actually going to go down by that amount that. So that is a mistake on my part.
Okay.
Going down fifty-two?
Fifty-two thousand. So I'm still at a decrease in the salaries and a decrease overall.
Plus health insurance.
I don't calculate the health, the health insurance. I just looked at our salaries and then professional services down. Carla and Josh is always taking care of the health insurance and stuff.
I was asking, was it school or the county that said no increase health? The county did not get a net increase.
So that's, that's my point, but that should not be.
Right.
Maybe it should still be down total.
Yeah.
That is. Stephanie, I, I don't know what you're showing, your numbers, but just so you know, our overall increase for treasure fourteen percent. So if that doesn't seem right to you, then I just.
Oh, well, Jack, and thank you.
Make sure I have the right row.
Lord, you have, you have your final number for your budget in front of you?
I have my final number for my salaries. And then I have the final number for, um, operational stuff, um, professional services and down. But I don't, I don't have the.
I think it'd be just subtract fifty-four thousand from this number.
That's correct. It's within.
Fifty-five, three forty-seven. All right. Well, that's good news, Lord. Thank you.
We good? Yeah.
Thanks, Lord. Good with your amount of staffing?
It's, what we're doing is tight. And I included something for y'all to look at from the comp board, but I didn't request any staffing because, I mean, let's be honest, I wouldn't get it, so.
Can you help me with, with something unrelated to your personal department's budget? So I'm trying to figure out where, with the Tyson contracts being removed, where that directly impacts the property value. So that's what I'm having a hard time with. I mean, if a store front that's rented is without a tenant, do we say the value of that store was?
We do. So commercial valuated property, when it is not in operation, they take a, and I'm not sure what the percentage is, but they do take something off of it because it's a vacant building. It's driven by, um, I guess the revenue they generate. Reassessment companies, so Pearson or Wampler, either one, when it's commercial, there is a factor in there for what it's generating. Chicken houses, if they are non-operational, and you would probably know better than me, I assume that they remove a lot of the equipment that is in them when they're not. No. But they do drop them. And so I reached back out to the reassessment company and asked them what they would do. Typically in the past, I went back and looked at some of them. Some of them, we've dropped down a lot. But I can't see like a year that they were built, which is giving me a little trouble and trying to figure out because they said to do a sixty percent depreciation on newer houses and a seventy percent depreciation on older houses. But they're never put in with what year that was constructed.
No, that would not be an accurate way to represent them either because you can have, you can have an older building that's had all its upgrades done and a newer building is less upgraded. You definitely can't use old versus new. That would not be accurate. That's interesting in general. The, the value of the building doesn't actually change whether you're cheap or that's other contract or not.
Given that you don't have a market for the building and it's, it's.
I agree with you.
But I know we did it with River Street, oh, River Cabinet.
Yes.
Company because the bank was paying the negotiated, I remember we had that issue come up.
Yeah, that dropped from, that was like seven million dollars when it was in operation and then they dropped it down to one point five million.
What does a chicken building do after you can't even have chickens to store some hag?
People turn them into some very creative uses, but that is interesting that you get to control that control now.
Does, does that affect the same on like a cattle? I mean, if a person has a feedlot or cattle barn and they no longer raise cows, do they get changed into?
Well, the barns are, barns are assessed at a lot less than chicken houses anyway. So like a typical barn in the county might have two thousand dollars on it if it's a brand new barn, but a chicken house will have like a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars on it. Right. Well, I mean.
And equipment is there regardless.
But if it's not being used.
Or the equipment.
We can't tax personal property like that to, to the farms. It's, it's tied in with the, with the building. Cause like the fans and everything are, right.
It's, yeah, it's installed equipment, not, not here to talk about the tractors.
I mean, I can reach back out to other commissioners that are dealing with this.
Commercial things, it needs to be equipped.
Right.
Uh, sitting in the meeting yesterday with the chicken people, let's don't be jumping conclusions too quick on this. Let's don't put the cart on the horse and let's let things play out before we make a rash decision about all this because there is options and they're working on. Them guys might be right back raising chickens next year. We don't know yet. So when it comes time to saying, hey, we're gonna lower the taxes on all this, hold it. Let's just see how things are going.
I have, um, I've said, I have had people come into me before I said anything about this with their contracts and things that have asked me that have had adjustments made for them in the past. And I've made that known that, you know, as long as it's not operational, is when the adjustment can be applied. So if they were to go back in, it would definitely go back to how it is.
And you've got to have a, the problem is, you, I mean, you personally, although it falls to your office, have to have a process is you would have no way of knowing when they have converted their, their usage to some other.
They have to pre-raid it.
And they should give an individual contract. You're gonna hear about it if a, a new operator comes in for the whole county. But you don't necessarily have a way of knowing, one farm has a contract, the other one didn't. You know, you need to raise those values.
That's true. That's true.
You know, it could be worth it getting them to sign something that acknowledges they understand if, if and when the building is used for anything again.
Right. They need to let, right.
That it needs, they need to come back.
We can do that.
And what I'm trying, you know, what you don't want is them ending up two, three years down the road and they get taxes. Obviously, that's we would all back to a one, but yeah. And I agree Dexter, that's why, that's why my caution goes, last meeting is the same.
You have a question? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank y'all.
This chair, um, with that mistake removed, it would be a minus four point eight seven percent in the budget.
Minus four point eight?
Yes, so it would go down four point eight seven percent. And I do apologize again for that.
That's why we're going through this.
It would be a lovely day in the neighborhood.
All right. Darryl, Darryl, you up?
It must be early.
Other than three o'clock.
She's not scheduled for three thirty until three thirty.
I'm not gonna hold you up.
He never does.
How about the lawyers in the, or beer league? Any contact? Darryl might, he may take more time, I don't know.
What, what am I doing? We can talk about something else if you want to.
I'd like to get back to work. So frankly, since you called. Hey, I got.
All right. Well, I don't have a, official presentation. Um, I think Josh said he sent y'all the letter that I sent him with a budget request. So I was just gonna hit some of the highlights there and answer any questions y'all may have. So on the general properties budget, we, um, have some increased costs for maintenance contracts to some generators we've added as well as the bleachers at the Parks and Rec. And we did include, uh, funds for, request for funds for maintaining the squad building and taking over that and, uh, some of the utility items. Is that, uh, squad will be taking over any items specific to their program, but we'll be taking over the, the grounds. Uh, maintenance and service contract with generators and things like that.
Can, can you back up to the bleachers at the school? I missed what you said.
The bleachers at the Parks and Rec building that we just replaced. We're gonna get a service contract on them so we can try to stay up on the maintenance. Um, and I think that service contract was about twelve hundred dollars a year. To have them come out, service all the rollers and everything and mechanical aspects of the bleachers, try to make them last longer, get more usable life out of them. Their composite with some wood, wood floor, composite seats.
Wax on them or something like that.
And they have, um, electric motors to drive them in and out so you don't have to pull them like you used to. So, um, additional funding request was, uh, for the, uh, full-time custodian that we asked for last year that we, we didn't, uh, didn't get approved. And then, um, some of our employees are working towards certifications and moving up, um, from one level of maintenance worker to the next. And then a purchase of a towable man lift. That's to maintain these ball field lights and things that we've added here recently as, as well as the streetlights and we've got security cameras and different things around that we use it for. So currently we rent one if we need it and it's about two thousand dollars a week to rent it. Sixty thousand. But you got to factor in time to go pick it up. And we normally will let light stay out a little longer than we should so we can condense the, the length of time rather than getting it on multiple occasions. So just trying to save some manpower with that purchase.
Is that a brand new?
Sir?
Is that a brand new one?
Uh, yes, sir. And that's about all, I believe, on the general properties. On the sanitary district, we had some increases for sampling requirements from DEQ. Some increases to hopefully be able to repair some of the items that'll be identified with the I and I study that's being done right now on the sewer system. And we are asking for funding of the position of chief wastewater operator. That is not a new position. It's a position that hadn't been filled, um, since probably two thousand nine or two thousand ten. So.
But it's beautiful on budgets.
Yes, it was not in the budget last year. Yes, sir.
And. Sorry, Josh, is sanitary district only showing on the department expense?
Uh, no, sanitary districts would have its own, um, line. And if we, uh, are looking for the expenditures, it would be in section three towards the bottom, uh, right above the high ground. Sanitary, sanitary district fund.
Twenty-six percent increase?
Yes, sir.
And we did, uh, submit information on a rate increase for the sanitary district for water and sewer. And the increase would be about, uh, would be fifty cents per thousand gallons, which would result in, um, about forty-two thousand dollars of additional revenue.
Would that keep you at the same general percentage of cost? That the county got subsidized on? And we've been trying to keep the rates similar with the increase over the last couple of years. Hard to tell because you've got the new person in there.
So it looked like we were asking. We were asking for about fifty-two thousand in additional money for the funding of the, the position plus the sampling and stuff. And we're gonna generate about forty-two thousand with the increase for the rates. So we will be losing a little bit of. So we will be losing a little bit of ground there.
But you'll be coming close to paying, paying for that position.
Right. And these are estimated numbers too, you know, because we're adding some new customers and stuff along the way and I didn't factor that in there.
Yeah, is the total total increase is showing at like two hundred, two hundred and ten thousand? That's all we have. Not to take it so much higher than.
Yeah, that's correct. A seventy-five thousand dollar salary is what we are budgeting that position at. So you have the seventy-five thousand and then after fringe benefits would be a hundred to three thousand, a hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-nine cents. Totally false for that position.
Do you reckon along fifty something?
Well, I thought we reduced, there were some reductions that fell in some of the other lines. I don't know. I didn't have the, the last, the final information from once he put the, uh, benefits and everything in either. So I don't know why we're so. Let me see. Was that a depreciation?
Well, I, I'm sorry. I, I, I think I know what's causing that, um, what, what the percentage is so high. If we are looking back at the previous year, um, debt service for the sanitary district, it was much less than, um, what is in the audit that we would be liable for in the coming year. Not entirely sure why that was the case, but it, it was a significant difference between the current appropriated amount for debt service and our projected debt service amount this year for twenty twenty-four. So that is a difference of, um, uh, let's see, the appropriated amount last year was thirty thousand, under seventy-four dollars. And we're looking at a hundred and thirty thousand per FY twenty-two audit figure. So that's the, the, the debt service for the sanitary district. Combined with the additional, um, position.
But you're not quite sure why it'd be an extra hundred thousand.
Yet out.
Service. So is that something you're able to track down?
I would definitely be sure, John. Yes, sir.
Yeah, that would make the difference a lot.
Yes, sir. So, and then the, uh, rate increase would be for water and sewer and that would, if a customer had water, both water and sewer, it'd be around a ten percent increase in their, their bill. So maybe five dollars a month or so.
That sound weird.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
Is there any specific question you have for the?
I have one, but it might, it don't have nothing to do with the budget. I mean, what's the maximum I put on our water? Gallon per day, uh, day?
Um, permitted capacity is, I'd have to look. I, I got so many numbers in my head, probably close to two hundred thousand a day.
A day.
Yeah, we, we currently do about a hundred thousand a day and we could double the capacity of the system, basically.
Shot of the, uh, proposal.
I can get you that number though, to, to give you an exact figure.
I have really no work.
Yeah, that ain't the word.
Five million a week for a proposal that they threw up yesterday and I was trying to sell them, you know, on it.
Well, we got that back through.
It takes five gallons of water to process one chicken.
You don't think, can't they filter that water and reuse it?
They didn't say that.
Yeah, I, I think let's look, we can look more broadly too, because unlikely that would be able to be located in the sanitary district anyway. You have to be looking at other sources. Which there aren't some good options for.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm just saying, I wouldn't consider it out. It's just.
Yeah. Well, the man was she's from Cumberland County and I said, what's in Cumberland County? Don't get me wrong, it's good people up there.
I mean, like. They recirculate.
But I was shocked they took that much water per, per chicken to process.
The, the permitted capacity is three hundred and ten thousand gallons a day.
Daryl, how's your supply chain stuff working? Getting any easier, better?
Uh, some things are getting better. Uh, chlorine gas for wastewater plant is, is better, is more stable now than it was. So, um.
Price there?
Prices are still going up. So don't seem to have leveled out.
What study was it that was going to help get us away from forty?
U V. Yes, sir. With the plant being now, down right now from the, uh, P L C, we're, we're going to ask to move that, um, funding from the P L C, from the U V to, to go ahead and, uh, upgrade that P L C at the, at the plant. So we can basically flip flop the U, U V with the, um, plant control upgrade. So, um, we should be able to get the plant controls upgraded and the design part of the U V done with, with the funding that y'all have already approved for the C I P. We'll have to bring it back to the board. Uh, tell you when I discussed that yesterday. So I got to get him some information on that.
Same funding and just different usage.
Yes.
That's why you come back to the usage is changing.
Yeah, we'll flip flop the two and then you'll see the U V show back up.
Right.
In twenty twenty-five, I think is where we headed somebody for.
How does that U V work on say if you had to pump the water a mile distance? Chlorine's, the water's treated with chlorine, correct?
Well, this, yes. So we're at the wastewater plant with the U V. So we will treat it as it leaves the wastewater plant.
I was thinking about to.
Chlorine on the water side. Yes, sir. We treat, we'll still be using the hypochlorate. Yes, sir. We feed the hypochlorate at the individual wells.
Yeah, because they can pick the contaminants in the line as it goes.
So, yes, basically going, um, eliminate the pathogens as it go or.
When you know more about it than me, that's why.
When it goes out as opposed to using the chlorine gas. So.
Anything else? Uh, you were talking, so, sorry, you, you were talking about, um, supply chain. So in some of the other requests like Kent's, we used to saw that it had difficulty getting vehicles in that we've already budgeted for, um. You anticipating that problem to continue? Your.
More than likely it, it doesn't. Well, I say that, but we did. I think it was Dodge. Somebody from a Dodge dealer had, um, called last week, a week before last and said that they had some pickups that wasn't, that weren't spoken for. And was just letting everybody know that they were out there. Um, but I don't think we had any thing that would fit. We, we weren't looking for anything that would fit in what they had. So I'm thinking with that, there may be some overproduction going on that, that may help that situation. So but most of them are, have been years out as opposed to.
Josh, related to that then, isn't, you know, that, that's a big one in, in Kent's, for example, he said we have seventy-eight thousand in use right now. Are you able to get projection that it would be penny because we haven't gotten there yet, projections of what you expect will be unspent? Uh, what's currently with our budget?
Sure. Yeah, I can, um, I can run a rough estimate.
Uh, Daryl, what, how much growth can the courthouse district take at that present setup we have? Say if a developer wants to come in here and something would grow big with X amount of houses, you know what I'm saying, or apartment? How much, how much can we actually handle without having to spend a pile of money to upgrade?
I would say safely you could double the number of customers we have right now.
Oh, okay. We're in good shape.
We've got, oh yeah, we've got some good presentations that were done.
Yeah.
And there's several pounds of developments that were already factored in in the past, as Daryl knows, that didn't come to fruition. We were already allocating, you know, kind of assuming capacity for that.
That's right.
The main, the main, almost only reason we've talked about expansion before is covering more geography. Not, it's not really about a capacity issue. It's, we are one of the really small sanitary districts and limits businesses, that kind of person.
That's correct.
That's good enough.
Yes, you can.
We got a lot of room for growth.
I feel we could safely double.
Less physical work for growth than we have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's the problem we have. We got capacity and nowhere to.
Now where to put it?
Yeah.
Well, we'll do it the other way.
No.
Go up. Go up.
But they're running out of land.
They're running out of it too. Okay, hey, we can go down.
We could have some sky strippers on here.
Uh, there we go.
So we just had a problem with the tier story.
Yeah. Well, buy a helicopter. Maybe four or whatever it's all.
Everybody good?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Daryl, you, you up?
Don't get to see me and you folks down at my building. Okay. Before we get started, can I do a mic check? Because there's, for some reason, they didn't charge. It's like just seriousness. I apologize. Can I get your mic? Thank you.
Everybody's breaking.
So it works out good. Sure is stressing.
It likes, yeah.
Space in here. Since this redone is.
Josh, at the next break, at the next break, can we go through the general fund revenue changes? I mean, like miscellaneous, you know, why does it change by four hundred and forty-seven dollars, four hundred and forty-seven percent for?
I can tell you exactly what it is too.
I'm, I'm sure you can. I've got a question on, I kind of like all understand all of them that are changing. So we can just walk through them.
Decided to be spring again, eh? Yeah.
Make up this morning.
Very good.
Thank you. Um, I am here today to, uh, talk a little bit about my budget request for the upcoming fiscal year and to, uh, answer any questions that the members of the board might have. My concern when working on this budget this year is a couple of different things. Next year, which includes a sub Y twenty-four, is a presidential election year. That's a big deal. There's a next whole extra election in March for the presidential primary. Uh, primary for local offices were both parties, plus the presidential election itself. Four years ago in the twenty twenty election, we processed forty-four hundred absentee voters. Thirty-five hundred of whom came through our office in person. We did it and we got everybody voted and it was clean and right. And I fully expect the twenty-four election to be better. Um, this past November, what doing our, um, local election for House District four, five, excuse me. Um, it wasn't as big as the presidential, but it was still very good size. Larger than the turnout has been being historically. More voters are turning out all the time. Voters love the in-person voting. That means our office gets hit for thirty-five voting days out of forty-five days. That's a lot for everybody. Um, so this budget reflects those realities and the request for additional funding this year in order to support the additional staff that I feel that we are going to need. Um, one of the problems we ran into last November was, uh, we did not have quite enough staff at the precincts. And so the people who were there ended up working all fifteen hours, literally had a couple of minutes to run to the restroom and that sort of thing. That's not fair to them. Fifteen hours is a long time to go without any kind of real break meal or anything else. And especially not at really low wages. Amelia was pretty much, um, we're at the, kind of at the bottom of the list of what we pay our election officers. We've been that way for a long time. And as we know, a lot of things have changed. And part of my request includes additional funding for poll workers, for both additional poll workers and their base pay. And I'm requesting that we go from ninety-five dollars a day to a hundred and ten. That's fifteen hours for a hundred and ten dollars.
I can't find her pages in the P D I.
Yeah, that, um, we had gotten this after the appendix was put together, sent out. This was emailed to me, um, after that was sent out. Um, you. So we have that up on the screens for you guys.
I'm showing decreasing.
I'm sorry?
On the registrar's side, yes, um.
But there's two.
The electoral board is the one that's taking it because the electoral board actually funds the workers.
Make sure we all know the same.
Yes, exactly. Well, actually, I'll, I'll bring up a little something I wanted to mention. I've talked to numerous localities of similar size to Amelia. And traditionally they have had two accounts, one for the electoral boards and one for the registrar's office. And the registrar is responsible for both and is continually shifting money from one to the other. Whoops, that got put on the wrong department budget line. They have almost exclusively gone to single accounting for department of elections, which would. for Department of Elections, which would cover both the registrar and the electoral board. We have similarly designated expenses, uh, as far as people, supplies, repairs, that sort of thing. That's just a toss out, something to think about. Perhaps you and Josh, you and I, Josh, need to talk about that. So that's basically.
When I was on electoral board, that was confused, that was always complicated moving it back.
Yes, is this electoral board or registrar? One would be wonderful.
It really would make a lot more sense.
So, um, there you go. Okay, I, where I felt I could, I tried to trim down, um, requests from the prior year so that I could help, uh, fund the additional monies that I'm asking for this year. Um, in addition to the, um, uh, extra monies for our poll workers and so forth, I am also requesting additional money in the registrar's officer staff. I have a part-time deputy period. And if she's not there, I have no one. Um, if she and I were both to be sick for some reason, there's nobody to run the office. And we need to have a second person in there. This person then becomes extraordinarily, uh, helpful during election season for the all the work that we have to do during that time period. And that time period, I could use a dozen people for six weeks.
So is that, I mean, is David saying even the electoral board only going up by ten percent and the registrar down by two and a half? That's included, that, that request you're talking about is included?
Full-time staff member?
No, an additional part-time staff member. In my, I'd love to have a full-time, but that, well, then we get into benefits and a whole lot of more money. Um, I also occurred to me that, you know, four now is a place to start. It could work very well that if I were to have two part-time people, I could get up to three thousand hours a year versus two thousand for a full-timer.
Can you? Can you correct your, we're having some different numbers in the book. What are you, what are you asking?
What am I asking for?
The numbers.
The total line?
For the student, the register and the double check the electoral board. Let's, let's make sure we're straight. Let's do the register first.
Okay. All right. For the registrar, I am asking for forty-eight thousand dollars for part-time salaries and wages.
It would not, because we can't replace that number because. Yeah, because he's got all.
Yes, that, that, yes. That's what you're seeing on the screen is poll workers only. But which, and that's one election's worth of poll workers.
Mrs. Jim, I don't recall, um, a request for a part-time staff member. I don't recall it. I may very well have overlooked it. But if it's okay with the board, what I'll do is I'll get with Ms. Hannah Thorne. Or, uh, yeah, after the meeting and we will make that adjustment and make sure that is included in the workbook.
Okay.
Okay.
Not, not derailing you just.
Yeah, no.
We don't, we don't see the numbers.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, okay.
Can we have that updated tomorrow?
Sure, absolutely.
Get us back on.
I'll have it to you tonight, actually.
And I mean, unless anybody objects, combining those two then would make it a lot easier. Kind of instead of having to parse out all that. Then you could see the total and total difference.
Who oversees that, that call? So we appoint people?
The judge appoints people.
The judge appoints.
Based on recommendations from the parties.
Who is it?
Pardon me?
She works. They, they're independent. I mean, it's a board. They, they're, the registrar works for the electoral.
I work for the electoral board, correct.
Yeah. So the electoral board is then accountable to the State Department of Elections, who sets their requirements, et cetera.
Should we have their recommendation also along with others if they want to combine? They're, some of them are here.
They're, they're here and I know they, they work very closely together. It's, it's representative of the total, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good questions. Appreciate that.
I just have more, I just have history of that particular one, so.
Right. Yes, thank you, Joseph.
Yes, I guess they remember.
Do we want to make that adjustment when you give us the updated numbers?
Combining the two budgets? I can do that.
Does that, with every bar, we're not going to motion a vote, but that's just a simple combined two lab, I thought would imagine.
Yeah, well, it's going to create a new set of geo codes is all it's going to do.
Yeah.
What does everybody think? Anybody's consensus on combining the two?
Similar.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Here.
Okay. Well, and, um, I don't know what else to say at this point then, um.
Because you've, you've given your justification, even if the number needs to be updated, you've explained why.
Right, yeah, that's, that, that is, that, that is why. Um, that was the most important thing is that I wanted you all to hear what we're looking at coming up and what we're trying to accomplish for the, our poll workers who, uh, they're the ones that get it done for us. And, um, they should be taken care of.
Man, we don't need no chaos then.
No, sir.
Coming up in this world now.
Yes, sir. You're exactly right. Don't want any more chaos.
Leave a bag.
You're not, it sounds like you're not expecting any kind of big costs of like replacement machines, et cetera.
No, I've, I've been working on that actually for the last couple of years within the budget that I've, I've had for repairs and maintenance and upgrades and that sort of thing. So I've been building that up. There's more to come. We just had a meeting about things, but that's probably going to land more in SIP for the upcoming year. That, things that we have to do for security reasons. Yeah, the security part is start to make up some dollars.
We've seen been building that up though. What do you, what do you specifically mean?
Well, I added an extra voting machine. I got new electronic poll books.
Perfect.
You know, instead of these sixteen-year-old ones that we.
Yeah.
Okay, so that kind of thing, I've been, I've been trying to, you know, build those things up as I could within, so that we're actually in pretty good shape, fairly recent technology and all fully approved by the state, so.
Very good.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I will go put my, what I'm.
Electoral board is just three people.
Yep.
At least thirteen dollars now.
Pretty much.
Right, oh, yeah. Yeah. Right. Okay, all right. Well, I'll just go play with my spreadsheet and I'm going to be here late this evening anyhow. I've got a, a thing going on for work, for work, so.
Sounds good.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
That gets us pretty, gets us through the main speakers that are here right now. Why don't we jump up to the CIP plan?
Yes, sir. So, um, the CIP, um, project recommendation from the planning commission was, um, presented. Uh, that was also in the appendix to the workbook. Um, there is also section ten of the workbook that lists the, um, projects for FY twenty-four. The planning commission, um, recommendations include all of the Uliata County Public School projects and they rate those with priority. Um, however, we did receive some news in the, um, interim that, um, the school system would like to push those back into another year and keep only the, um, vocational tech center project, um, for FY twenty-four. Um, so the CIP section reflects that. Um, and that is a total project cost of, for the CIP, um, of thirteen million, nine hundred fourteen thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars for FY twenty-four. There are eleven projects total in the system.
And I do apologize, um, at the board meeting the other night. I don't want to completely speak if I didn't confirm, but I think we can drop the conceptual model study in the library because we all agreed that we're not going to build an eight and a half million dollar library right now. So we had discussions at the library meeting and it, it never went official, but I'm pretty sure that we don't need to pay for a, a model study of something we didn't decide to do right. And I think we can just make that decision our own anyway, but, um, we did discuss that at the last library meeting and, and I, I completely forgot about it in our meeting last week. I mean, I know that's not a significant amount, but it's not something we need to, uh, approve to fund when it's not in, in our immediate future planning.
Right.
Josh, you have to, the balance of CIP, what has not been allocated?
The number that's not appropriated with current year?
Yes.
The number you can write a check for today.
Uh, at, well, at, um, two, at February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, the beginning cash. Um, the beginning cash at July one, twenty twenty-two was ten million, ten point five million dollars. You had six point nine million appropriated for, um, and that's between what was budgeted for in the, um, FY twenty-three budget process and the project rollover for current projects that they're appropriated for but not fully expensed. So that makes up that six point nine million dollars if, um, I, uh, we need to double check and make sure I have the accurate figure for what the cash balance is at two twenty-eight. But you have roughly a difference of, I'm going to say four million dollars roughly. Um, that is unencumbered fund balance in the CIP.
Well, that check won't balance if Todd writes it.
Well, where's that coming from? Because the CIP unencumbered money isn't supposed to carry over from year to year.
Well, we've appropriated money for the projects that are ongoing that weren't finished out in the current fiscal year.
So aren't they encumbered though?
Yes, they're, they, well, they, the appropriated amount is the income.
Uh-huh. So how do you end up with four million dollar difference?
The difference in the cash versus what's been expensed. Like if we were to expense a hundred percent of what's been appropriated in the current year, which is the six point nine million dollars, um, we had ten million dollars in cash at the beginning of the year. If we were to expense a hundred percent of that, the difference would be what the cash balance would be after the six point nine million dollars and the difference in the ten million dollars.
We're getting fully expended last year.
But it's not supposed to sit in the CIP fund if it's not appropriated or spent or, or encumbered either one, right? I mean, so we're just carrying funds over in CIP now?
Well, the, the cash balance gets built up if projects go like multi-year projects, we made budget over.
And they're, so they should be encumbered though, right? If it's a multi-year project. Uh-huh.
So the, the appropriated amount for FY twenty-four was about five point one million dollars. That's what it's had, was a favorite. The carryover was about one point eight from FY twenty-two in current ongoing projects. The balance that was not spent in FY twenty-two was then appropriated in FY twenty-three. So your encumbered balance is six point nine million dollars, but you have a cash balance of ten point five. And that's just because of, you know, if we bring in more revenue than what was budgeted, then it gets put into the fund balance. Uh, but we don't, we try not to spend over what's been, or anything that.
Oh, yeah, no, I know that part.
Under budget or whatever. It just, it gets added to that fund balance.
Hey, hey, this is my, this is my table to say. When we approve a project, money is set there, set aside, go somewhere else for that project. We need to, we need to have that updated. And with that, if that budget, if that project comes under budget, then the remaining fees, I think we should go back to the CIP program for the next project.
Mm-hmm. It does.
And I, I think we need to.
I know we, you know, we cleaned that up at two years ago and.
I know, that's why I forget how there's millions now, when it's already been cleaned up. That's.
I don't, I don't think it's billions there. I think it's. Well, right. Bookkeeping. I, I do think we need to.
I know we, we pulled a, a watering system out of, for the football field because, I mean, it wasn't millions, it was tens of thousands, but it had been there for multiple years.
And wouldn't be in use.
We, yeah, they can't do it because they need, would need two fields technically to be able to do that. So, yeah, we, we cleaned it up.
And it was one project the school did, um, that came like twenty thousand dollars under budget. So that needs to be reflected back in the CIP. I just think if we had cleaned it up, we probably did, but I think we need to.
Other savings with their, with their initial HVAC.
It's, it's, it's got to be cleaned up on a monthly basis is the thing. Every time one clo, a project closes, you got to see, well, what's the leftover money? And then, I agree with exactly what you're saying.
You got to bound that checkbook every month.
You wouldn't end up though with millions sitting somewhere because you would make decisions to either reallocate it to a different project or whatever you tend to do. It would all be alloc, the point is it would all be allocated.
You don't have to CIP you probably once a year. You can. You got the money, oh, this project come under. Well, hey, we can go ahead and grab this project. And, you know, keep the projects moving. You don't have to wait a whole year on that.
Or look for funding somewhere else for a project to hit one of these big CIP centers.
Right, right.
So where is that?
We got to go through the CIP this year. What kind of improvements can we make? We want to see what's appropriate, what we can clean up from last year, put back in CIP. I think, I think we need a list of budgets. What y'all?
Yeah, so I agree with you. So where would we see, Josh, in the booklet here? Where would we see that difference of several million? It's cash there, but not allocated or encumbered?
For the CIP, it would be on section ten, which should be the last page in your, um, workbook.
So you have an act, you see, so we have an extra six point seven million sitting there, but.
That's unencumbered, yes, sir.
Yes. Wow. That's money that's not attached to anything.
No, it's just been money that has built up over the years in the fund.
I hope it's been drawing us some decent interest.
Yeah, you draw a lot of interest on it.
I hope so.
Four plus.
Good, well, that's decent.
I was gonna say, that's, that's not good, that's not good, but yeah.
Yeah.
It's better than a percent and a half.
Yeah.
Yes, that, that's very understandable.
What's the projected one million in other revenue grants for this year?
A million dollar grant for the radio project that Kim was working on.
And that's not been included yet, right?
No, it's there.
It's there, yeah. Where's the money from the federal government for the Wells Fargo building? Is that already received? That's the three, okay. So since we won't have gotten it this year, you'll just carry it forward into?
Yeah, our anticipation is not to have it done before year end yet.
Well, not, not if we receive the money, right? We didn't even get the three seventy-five, did we?
I don't believe so. I don't check with Stephanie though.
I, I don't think so either. So I'm just saying you'll carry that forward as projected another time, yeah.
Yes, sir.
How can we project in this year's, uh, surplus? That would technically go right back into the general fund, which would go into CIP. We have a objective.
Well, see, that's another issue that some of these, some of these groups ask for CIP money and then it sits there. And they never do anything until the very end. And then we're still waiting on prices or we're waiting on bids or we hadn't done it yet. So you've locked the money up for a whole year.
Right.
That the county got no benefit out of.
Yeah, but they can't move forward until they know they have fund. I mean, it's a bad catch twenty-two.
It was approved the, the prior year. You were approved then. You should have moved forward. You presented it for a project. You should have been ready to move. But you didn't. You just had it locked up for a year.
Well, let's not forget that these funds, the goose that laid the golden egg is drying up.
Oh, yeah, there's, it's shrinking.
Yeah, so we got to remember that one of these heads, total amount that, uh, what of us coming up in the future? That we.
I think Sean.
I hope it is.
Limited law for a couple of years.
Well, I was saying, history does what happens. So I think what Sean's asking for is the same. I think, and I was trying to clarify, I think what Sean's asking for about the projected surplus is essentially the same thing, Josh, that I was saying a minute ago about departments that are not planning to spend all theirs. Is that what you're saying thing here?
Right, right.
What do we expect the surplus? Is we're, I mean, looking at the current spend expenditures, we should be well under this year's budget and the revenue is well above the budgets.
Right, the, if we straight line the revenue for the current. Right. Well, the, if we straight line the revenue for the current year, we're actually, based on current activity to do a straight line projection, we're actually gonna be coming in under budget in our revenue. Um, we're projecting two point seven. We had budgeted three point three. And that's just based on what we brought in months ago.
For CIP.
Oh, wow, what's talking CIP?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, just we're not, we weren't, we're talking, the surplus for CIP, I mean, that's, you've got that there, Tim. We're talking about the regular general fund budget, okay?
Yeah, um. Surplus at the year end, it's, we're likely not gonna have more revenue coming in than we have expenditures because we adopted a budget with a um deficit. So the current year budget has an eight hundred thousand dollar deficit running in it. Um, so my assumption would be that we wouldn't necessarily have a surplus in generated revenue from activities during the year. We would have a balance in the account, in our reserve account. But I don't believe that we will come in revenues over top of expenses in the current year.
Okay, so that would be the first year and while. I would say every other year we end up coming in that. So that would be a big change. So then we need to understand.
Yeah, that's why, you know, I'd like to see that proof on paper because historically, we've always come under.
Yeah.
Which is where a lot of this money come from.
Exactly.
Well, in the general fund, if um, we were looking at, for instance, FY twenty two with the finalized numbers there, our um expenditures were in the twenties and our revenues were in the nineteenth. So there's a difference there in the general fund.
Yeah, they were, they were fronting off the CIP funds in the past, correct?
Uh, I I can't speak for prior to FY twenty two, but I do know that there was five hundred thousand dollars transferred from CIP into FY twenty two for
Yeah.
expenses.
We've been in the hole for a while.
That's a heat, it's a staying amount.
Yeah. Because, because they, so it's not front, the point is, it's not front.
So so the whole word agreed to that.
It just moved the money. Yeah, it didn't.
Ten years ago, I reckon, so.
Hey, we got a new background.
And we haven't been running the hole. We've been, we've had an increase and we've been, we've had presentations on this from the outside group. We've been increasing our general fund reserves every year because we've had more and more.
Supposed to be the beginning of actually.
If you remember, that was the presentation about a year ago where they're talking about how we've now gone up so high above the recommended reserves. Because every year we have, we add more. So I mean, Josh is, right? But I see you're nodding yes.
Yeah, there there was a um, a difference transfer over thirty percent of the expenditures into the CIP from the general fund.
Right.
So anything in excess of thirty percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Can we?
Yeah, exactly.
Can we get an updated list on the current CIP projects for this year?
Sure.
What's in there? And if you get a brief description of where they're at? Are they gonna be moved forward and some kind of justification of why they're waiting or why they're not? So we can look at that and we can.
I would really like.
Isn't that the same, isn't that the same as the tracker you have available for us all the time?
I'm, well, I believe um Brady has taken that piece over, but yeah, it would be.
Cause he, cause that's available to us every, that's live for us to see all the time.
But yeah, I'll get you the most, I'll run you um, the most current one, three or four or.
Does.
I think I have.
Yeah, cause I mean, it tells like which ones are waiting for it for the final invoice. Brady made a lot. Thank you. Yeah, y'all worked so closely on stuff together, but yeah. We've got a good report of that now. Like, I mean, the biggest. I don't know. He sent it to us an email. I just bookmarked it. So um, five hundred thousand on hold for Parks and Rec planning. So that, I mean, that's a good, I mean, we've placed that on hold before. There's no point in continuing to hold that money for nothing. We've got forty seven thousand on hold for Public Works, Vapple Building. I mean, it just kinda keeps running.
Who said that they?
Brady managed it, but.
I ain't never seen it.
So we might have said that there was, you, they were moving all over.
Yeah, I ain't never seen it.
I'll just send, I'll send you guys something right now.
You left me out.
No, you're, no, you're on it. Just to be, it's not you. I mean, we can see all the, we can see in the history that it's been shared with them. All five of us are, it's been shared with. What David's saying is still not being, while it's being tracked, it's not being reallocated. So that doesn't change that.
Right, it's still, can't access being expended.
Right.
That's all I got.
Oh, this is. Isn't that the same one?
Yeah, I don't know. I ain't never seen it. It might be on it, but it ain't never coming right there.
Well.
Cause I don't believe nothing.
When you do that, it's an automatic email out, so I don't know what type. I don't think it's super current, though, because even though it's says it's current, like the gym upgrades for the bleachers, which Daryl was just saying is finished, that's listed as not started.
Everybody likes a bleacher.
So he can bring it in, but I don't think it's gonna be current regardless. But here's a good example, like the Library and Hindle Lights project that came in three thousand under budget. Oops, no, sorry, wrong direction. Three thousand over. But a lot of other ones are under.
The money's still sitting there.
Apparently.
Well.
You can't tell from this report. Doesn't show, this doesn't show the.
The money's there. We didn't know it's there.
It's like Wells Fargo. Well, like the Wells Fargo. For example, are we, in addition to what was coming from the federal government, we, we al- we allocated four hundred thousand.
Right.
So I'm not clear when I look at that, that whether, whether that four hundred thousand's already taken into account or not.
It it is in the um, on section ten of the workbook, the seven hundred sixty eight thousand, one hundred seventeen dollars is what has been um what has not been spent currently out of that four hundred thousand dollars um, and the difference between the grant money. So there uh, Mr. Ball has requested that a hundred thousand dollars be added to that project from, for some additional items that have come up. So it'll be the three hundred and, I think it was fifty one thousand dollars that unspent Wells Fargo money currently, plus one hundred thousand dollars. And the additional money to meet the um contractors quote that we have received. I believe that was one million forty nine thousand dollars for the project.
Square foot is in that building.
I don't, I don't.
I thought it was around three.
Three hundred thirty square foot.
Yeah, for knocking walls out. Cause that doesn't include outfit.
Why does it not? The bid we saw, the bid we saw did.
Filing cabinets and all that? I mean, I've.
Oh, I don't think.
Furniture, that's.
I thought there was, but I thought there was a line item in there because she, there was even a recommendation in those false savings about.
From the contractor?
I said, I thought, and it blew back up. Cause there was a recommendation for less, I thought, of the. Hard time finding. Where is the Wells Fargo then in the CIP list for this upcoming year?
Yeah, all the way down basically at the mall.
Seven sixty eight, one seventeen.
That's not the one I'm looking at. Um. Ten says storage building, two renovation.
Um, there was an updated workbook sent out yesterday.
So I, that's, I'm not in the workbook. I'm in the detail submitted.
The details.
Index C.
Oh, okay, you're the planning commission recommendation. Um, Taylor Harvey um, mentioned to me that it was not included in that list. But it is an ongoing project, so if you won't see it in the planning commission's recommendation, we had um missed that in the um FY twenty four list. So that has been added to the workbook um for, as an ongoing project.
What page is that on? Bottom.
What it says on?
Okay, so I'm not, all right, so now I'm on that page. So you're requesting, or it's being requested, I must say to you personally, requested seven hundred and sixty eight thousand. Does, and that number does or does not include the four hundred thousand that's already allocated?
It does include.
So we're dou- so if that's the case, though, then we're double ask. Like, so we said this year's requests are thirteen point nine million, but it's actually not. Because four hundred thousand of that, at least for that one project, look at the rest of it, is already allocated.
Uh, yeah, the total expenses is thirteen point nine and it does include the um, current appropriation in this year yet. So um three, I believe it was three hundred and uh three hundred and fifty nine thousand of that, seven hundred and sixty eight thousand is currently appropriated in this year's budget.
If it's appropri- if it's appropriated in this year's budget, then why is it listed as, I mean, the total the total is the the fiscal year twenty twenty four ask.
That was a cost for next year's budget.
So it says new year project request thirteen point nine.
Mm hmm.
But you're not subtracting out the the three, what's left of.
What are you saying? You're double dipping. Basically, right?
Yeah, we appropriated.
I don't understand how it's not.
Well, the estimate is that the seven hundred sixty eight thousand is the estimated local money for the whole project.
Uh huh.
So.
That's exactly what I'm saying. And if you look in the current CIP allocations, you already have four hundred thousand allocated.
Yes.
So that needs to be removed from what you're asking for in the next cycle. You can't ask, you don't ask for the same amount that's already allocated, right?
Well, we were gonna be asking for the difference in, to put it into the line item, that would be the line item amount that we would have to put in the expensive line item on the operating statement for the budget. The whole, the total appropriated amount for local expenditures would be the seven sixty eight. It would include the three fifty nine in the difference. And the number's in there like that, so that way we capture the whole cost that we are planning to expense in FY twenty four.
But Josh, how do you label it then as new project requests when it's, it's not?
I think this money is the three seventy five million plus the additional it's gonna take to finish the project.
I can't tell.
Excluding the original four hundred thousand.
But he just said it's not excluding that.
Three hundred and fifty nine thousand is part of the one point one million dollar project. We are looking at the three hundred seventy five thousand dollar grant from the USDA, the current appropriated three hundred fifty nine thousand and the difference. It was, I did put it in.
All right, let's just go through those slower then. Total project cost is one point.
One point one million forty nine thousand dollars, I believe is the number.
Okay, and you're already in the, that's three seventy five from the federal. And then we've already allocated three hundred and what's left? Three seven, three fifty, yeah, it's around that. So the own, so the remaining funding needed is three hundred and seventy five thousand, not seven hundred and sixty eight thousand.
Correct.
Okay, so we would remove almost four hundred thousand from the CIP requests for the upcoming year.
If we would be using the um FY twenty three balance and we're asking, yes, for an additional, um, I believe it's roughly four hundred thousand dollars
Mm hmm.
in the FY twenty four budget to be added to the three hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars, yes.
And the four hundred, or and the grant, and the federal grant.
So just to be clear, this will go down.
If we take out the, the um FY twenty three, yes.
You're gonna, and you're gonna have to, because you've already listed here how much is allocated to existing appropriations. Yeah, okay, all right. So we need to go through all the other open ones to see if there's extra money carried over too.
Point number two.
Machine breaking.
Yeah, so Josh had sent a link out. I think that might be what you were referring to, uh, Mr. Easter for like a Microsoft Teams document for the CIP.
Yeah.
Uh, this document right here that I have is the most update. Um, it even has the most recent uh invoice for the radio system upgrade. And this is for FY twenty three. It shows you whether it's in progress, on hold, not started. And then there's also some notes to the side as I've gotten updates from the departments in terms of if it's gonna come in under budget, if it's gonna come in over budget, okay? Um, so here's a printout. And this information uh was reviewed by the CIP.
Thank you, sir.
And I will transfer these into the Teams document. I apologize that I haven't transferred them into the Teams document yet, but this is.
See, that's the second one right there is the one I mentioned. The school said they got a huge grant for this HVAC replacement.
Yeah, they heard that grant.
See, it says new cost ninety one thousand.
But it's not updated.
As we've allocated six eighty eight for it.
Right.
That's huge.
Mm hmm.
That's half a million dollars. I mean, over half, I don't be clear, but we just roughen it, you know, I mean, that's six hundred thousand.
Between that and.
And the four.
And the other one that we just, it's a million, that's a million dollars. Yeah. Little part of a massive.
Yeah, that's what we're saying. We've got.
And now they want it again.
They don't.
No.
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay. I got you. I got you. I got you.
Money we have that we don't know we have.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I got you. I got you.
It's being used on paper.
So, so that's five ninety seven left on that balance that we have.
Yeah, that goes back to CIP.
You put that back.
Right. So this is, right. So when you see, you see it here as the current project, current appropriations on page twenty eight, all those then reduce the appropriations. And so then they can free up the money for us to spend on existing ones, new ones, existing or new, either one.
Or, yeah, or I can add it to the six seven. Six seven is what we got to. Yeah, right.
Well, they do. That's what they would increase. It increases the six, yeah, then you, yeah, you spend it on whatever you want.
So we wanna put the.
Like, here's a, here's a public works one that is sixty six thousand dollar balance.
Mm hmm.
And says it's complete.
But it's awaiting final invoice.
Well, right, but I'm just saying.
Which will take, I think that one, cause I, I hear what you're getting at, and I think that one is gonna, that sixty six thousand might be all assumed in that final.
Okay, that's, yeah.
But I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
And, and I think right now, as we've gone through this, this is all, you know, we got this information from the schools, for example, for their project savings a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
But it's all, it's still not like confirmed as in the final dollar's been spent. And so that's something that I just had a question about is when do you, when do you manipulate the account line down? You see what I'm saying? So if you have six eighty eight appropriated, when would you, when would you adjust it down to?
Down.
A hundred thousand.
Now.
I mean.
We could do it any, we could do it at any meeting.
It's been, I guess.
Definitely when the bill's been paid.
Yeah, it's when the bills.
But they're telling us the new es- in this case, it's not done. They're telling us the new estimate. So you would drop it based on whenever they tell you the new estimate is accurate.
Right.
You've got two other ones down here that are complete, where you've got a total of thirty one thousand extra. That was um, A C P S, fire alarm detection and.
Oh, yes.
This has just gotta be.
You should make it better.
You mean thirty one thousand if you can buy it?
Mm hmm.
Yeah. I mean, I, it's gonna ruffle somebody's feathers, but the Hennel building and animal shelter, we've allocated six hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards that.
Yep.
That, I think, I would, I would say anyway, that the VOTech, the tech center is more important than either one of them.
Agreed.
This year, you know, we're not doing anything with the Hennel building and the animal shelters getting by, you know, that's money that you could you could move that too, we can reallocate that, it hasn't been started, it hasn't been spent, you can reallocate it anytime you want to, before we came. A lot of these are in progress is where, you know, they've already started spending the money, you can't really do much with that, but.
Going forward, it'd be helpful to list when these were funded uh to get to Dex uh or Dexter or Tuck, I remember which one I'm said, you know, how long they take to move through. I remember some of them are old, but, you know, without the date in there, I don't wanna estimate on that.
That's another one for the school is HVAC in it. Russell Grove. Purchase order for forty five thousand.
Yeah.
Ninety thousand.
Speeder, right, so that's another one that's probably going to have a significant savings on it when it's finally.
Yeah.
Um, build, yep.
Well, and if that's the purchase order, then talk to the schools and just find out, okay, you're expecting more or not.
Right. It shouldn't be if they build it.
I agree.
It'd be it.
I agree, and then the very next one on gym and final scoreboards, it looks like it's all been ordered, so you should have a good idea now of is that seventy nine, four sixty five, and it's still be the right number or not? But then update the other direction too, like you got the front exterior envelope on A E C S, you know, closer to fifty thousand, alright, if, if that's the legitimate thing, update that if necessary too, so you, but the point is have accurate number.
The one right under is estimated savings, so.
Yeah.
They're, they're kind of a washout, but.
Mm hmm.
Might be in such that the two years.
More and more building evaluation, if that's been done, yeah.
Was it about one?
I don't know, I don't remember anything about that project, I don't know, it says, does that the one that's on hold? That may be before, that may be something's been on there for a while, I don't.
At the S D R.
I don't remember ever going over that in a meeting anyway.
I don't know, but. I think you got a million five hundred thousand dollars, you could change real quick, I mean, ruffle, at least, ruffle.
Yeah.
I mean, you can pull that back, oh, and that, 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 that's a good chunk of change.
And then you look at this nine five for the tech center and you factor in the schools portions.
Yeah, because that's, that's a good point, because they're not actually requesting nine five from us, so that number shouldn't be, that number should not be factored in as that amount either.
Right, that's true.
Where are they getting it?
Well, they've.
Total, that's total project cost.
That's the total project cost, but they told us about the one grant, and then that's now a reply for the second one, which that one seems not likely, but the first grant, they, they said.
They had the construction.
Yeah, they're not asking us for nine, nine point five.
It's more, it's more in seven range with what's immediately available, I think.
Yeah.
And if they sell that building up, that.
Yeah, but that's probably dead.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, we don't know, it could.
But the estimate, yeah, the estimates need to not, not be the project cost, they need to be the cost that they're asking us for, most of that, most of the time, that's the same, but in this case, it's definitely different.
Immediate, if we had to write a check today, what would we have to write it for?
Right.
And it's not, it's not nine point five.
So that's another two, two million there.
Didn't they say they had some funds, other funds they could put in on that?
Yes, yes, that's what.
In the hundreds of thousands of dollars, I'm not sure the exact amount.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a lot, I mean, it's way under nine.
I don't have it with me now, but.
Alright, so we got a lot of updating to do on CIP.
Yeah, I think so, and I.
More than we'll get done by tomorrow.
It was in our board book last week, that document, and.
Yeah.
The schools.
Mm hmm.
And I, I emailed it to everybody.
The money right here that can be.
What all, what do y'all feel in the process if you, if a budget, if a project comes in over budget? Gotta be allocated by the board, that's come forward.
Yeah, but I think, I think there needs to be some, on these projects, I think you need to be getting prices and quit pulling numbers out of the air.
Mm hmm.
Because a lot of them look like they're just made up numbers. I mean, if you want to do a project, you should at least bid it out and get an idea of what you're gonna do.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's fair.
And hold them to them numbers.
Well, I mean, it is what it is.
I, I think some of it though, Todd, this is how I feel about it, if, if I didn't, I would not want to invest the time if I didn't know you were going to approve it, to, 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 you know what I mean? Why, why go spend five, six hours getting a precise quote if, if it's not going to be approved anyway, just get a general answer.
But wouldn't, wouldn't you think if it, instead of coming in at
Approved.
Four hundred thousand, when it's really two hundred?
Right.
Wouldn't you have a better shot at getting it to two hundred and one four?
And we see, but do, we don't, I mean, we're, any of them are off that much, I don't see any that are coming off like by that, by large amounts.
I just use that for an example, I don't care if it's ten thousand dollars, I think you still have a better shot at getting it approved at twenty thousand than you would at forty, over twenty thousand than you would at thirty.
The immediate request from the schools is a six million nine hundred and eighty thousand. Which isn't including the potential grant and the sale of the school, but that's, that's including the current state.
That brings that nine, that brings that nine down a lot.
They, now, in that, they are factoring in their CIP savings in that, they're factoring in the HVAC, they've already done the math, that's seven hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars.
Mm hmm.
That should be in this list we have in front of us, so they did the math on that, which I appreciate, and factoring if we allowed our um, their carryover from the previous year to go into that, which is three hundred and sixty one thousand, it'd be six million nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars of actual CIP funding. And I can just resend this to everybody in the end real quick, so go ahead.
Was that only one for the school tech center?
Yes.
You said?
Yeah, yes, yeah, it's the same document. So I mean, that, we didn't already dropped it down below the four million dollar deficit, then we're pretty close.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. I like that kind of math.
Yeah, instead of going the other way.
Yeah, I don't know if we got there yet.
Well, we're starting.
We're getting close.
The four million dollar deficit?
Mm hmm.
We didn't got it today.
Yeah, when you touched that.
The grant. Seven sixty eight.
Those CIP savings.
Okay.
It's a lot, it's a lot.
Now, where did it come up, like, for this nine point five million for this building, where did you get, how did you come up with that figure?
That's what the.
That's the estimates they've done.
Yeah, the.
What are they asking?
It was the architect.
So it's on the architect, okay.
Yeah, which as we discussed, that number will probably, we can come down with business partnership, but that's what they come up with the turnkey.
Does it mean like we discussed in that meeting, I think a lot of people would donate stuff that they needed to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Body, yeah, you know, all that.
Potential companies that would be on board, so.
Yeah, this is just the maximum.
Right.
So just they come up with the cost savings. And it, a grant. That is the only thing they have in their CIP.
That's what they told?
Yeah.
Give them more time.
Yes.
Look at the back of your book. You got it right there, right? Yeah, the other page you're on, that's all the CIP for this year.
The sidewalk, right? Would that fall into the decal account?
The decal account?
And one that is generated from, I mean, sale of the decals goes into an account.
Sell our project for the schools?
No.
Uh, the county, the ones where we're getting the grant.
Oh, I'm not entirely sure, I can do some more research on that.
What's, do you know what the balance is in that fund, because I see, we're saying right now, using zero of that this year.
We normally save it for the um road repairs, I remember how much, I don't think it's like eight hundred minute last year, I think.
Was it that much?
We spent a little bit on the.
That's.
Meadow, yeah, raw metal.
Right, 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 that's right, yeah, to get that up to.
I think we need to go through and have a good understanding of all those funds like that, so the, you know, the proffers, the five dollars, there's a E nine one one fund.
Yeah.
All of those kind of things that are, don't seem to show up here.
I'm running a list here.
Because if it's that significant, that would cover the first phase of the sidewalk.
Mm hmm.
And these, you know, it's, it's much better to use these funds.
On one time expenses like.
Yeah, on time, yeah, let's, let's build the sidewalk, pay for it today, save.
I don't see, based on what I've read before about proffer um stipulations, I think that would meet that criteria too, because it includes transportation.
That's true.
And.
It's true, yeah.
That makes the definite, that makes the definition of transportation.
It's local infrastructure, so.
Mm hmm.
Proffers could roll over to the wastewater too.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, I don't really see any reason carrying, carrying proffer money over.
Wastewater, sidewalk, in the, the.
Every year.
Emergency system project.
Lose it now, but we just have to.
But it won't be re- it won't be reimbursed. Or.
Speaking of. It'll be a collective, we can, like we have, it's just.
About time, Clark.
Yeah.
But if we haven't been using it.
What's that sidewalk project have a time limit on?
Decal fund is over a million dollars. And proper. Well, alright, so another almost two million.
Wow. It's not doing our citizens any good to charge them for.
Now, the decal.
Bar tax.
Can be spent for.
I'm, I'm not sure what the restrictions are on that.
So we would have to get that answered, and then the proffers could be sidewalk, wastewater share, probably.
Waiting an answer on that.
Okay.
Speaking of proffers, um, Danielle has got some.
Stuff in money in the mattress.
You're not gonna be ready for next Tuesday, but there's way more answers than we're gonna have by Tuesday.
It is now.
Mm hmm.
Oh. You want to work her in tomorrow? Sometime that she can talk, tell us about the proffer. Situation of what we can't.
We can try.
Money that we've received in the past can be spent on how the county needs to approach, any future onsite or offsite project, all information will hurt it more.
She, she can't just email us the answer?
I don't think they have the answers, I think that she and Jeff are having a discussion now, they're.
Oh.
It's not. I don't think it's all cut and dried, how the process is supposed to play out.
How about the decal one, is that a state regulated?
I'm sure there's some restrictions on it, but we can get that answer probably quicker than we can the answer to the um property.
Because I mean, I think that kind of particular money that, you know, says you have to pay it, it's, it's good to see that money go into a, a project, you know, a tangible, people can see the physical, hey, you know, yeah, you've been paying for those stickers that you don't get, but here, here's what you get for your money, you know, we're building a sidewalk. That kind of thing.
So we've got a list of questions for Josh on the CIP. We want to get what's in breed, and get us to sit there this year, which we got to have some of it, and we went down through it. Oh. Any more questions that we need to? What y'all want on the CIP stuff?
Joseph wanted dates.
Like in the future, yeah, that doesn't need to be for this round now, but.
I, I mean, Josh, I, I don't know if, so, so I'm not the middle man here, if you want to talk to the schools directly on that that sheet, and get, you know, get that accurate six point nine figure, you know, I think that would be fine, and I apologize, because I know I was going back and forth with them, but um, because they, they do have state money already set there, it's one point two million.
One, one, three, eight, nine, nine, twenty four.
Yeah, that.
And we appreciate that.
That's immediately off of the top of that, so.
Okay, and we appreciate that information, because that wasn't something that we had at the start, so.
And I'll.
Definitely communicate with.
I'll send you that same sheet real quick, because they.
That'd be perfect.
They just generated it about a week, week and a half ago.
Ah, okay, so, that explained it.
It was just that, you know, I like visuals, give me something to look at and.
Yes, sir.
Dexter, you're talking about all the nonprofit ones, you, that's, that's sixteen percent down, what's being asked for by the local and regional this year, to- the total, Brady's got that in there in section nine.
Oh, should we? I have to dare about the World Memorial, but just see what that is.
I think somebody needs to go through every one of them that's not started.
Well, alright, I think that's fair, I, I believe you're right.
Why um, why are we projecting eighty percent more for fines and forfeitures this year?
In the general fund?
Mm hmm.
Um, that line item is probably activity based, and the spreadsheet is counting it as a straight line projection, um. Fines and forfeitures.
Yeah, and then use of money and property, which I'm not sure what that incorporates, but that's more than double.
Uh, yeah, now, the use of money and property, we had some bad years under COVID with um investments, we have some interest bearing funds or activities, those.
So that's that.
Rastically, yeah, and that's coming back up with the change in the market.
Okay. Um, why do we project down so much for charges for services?
Um, if we're looking at the current activity, um, that was the under section four, local revenue forecast, on page um three of that that section, which um let me grab our copy, is this gonna be a different page number for y'all?
Nine, nine.
Yeah, uh, page eleven actually.
Oh, okay, so, well, I was just looking where local revenue started.
Yeah. Um, that would be in the um second box fiscal year appropriated, if you look at the last column, actuals on two twenty eight, twenty three.
Mm hmm.
Um, we are talking about.
Charges for services.
Yes, charges for services, that would be the fourth from the bottom.
Mm hmm.
The actuals for that, um.
Oh, wow.
At two twenty eight were a hundred and twenty two thousand dollars at February twenty eighth. So when we straight line project that um for the year and then trend it, um, that's the number that we get for uh projected FY twenty twenty four.
So the budget was just pretty far off on that particular item then, so we were expecting three hundred and seventy thousand?
That, that's correct, and that.
Historically, it was pretty low.
Mm hmm.
Okay.
And because it's activity based, charging services, if, and that's just a snapshot in time, it could very well go up as we. And because it's activity based, charging services, if, and that's just a snapshot in time, it could very well go up as we.
Yeah, well, that's fine. No, that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, so you were gonna, you said you were gonna talk about the miscellaneous revenue going up.
That's correct.
Dramatically.
So that specific, um, the miscellaneous revenue is where we are going to have, um, create a new G O code for the, um. Rescue squad, emergency management income that's gonna be coming in now that we're assuming those services. They are ballparking about six hundred thousand dollars in recovered cost with, that I had put under miscellaneous revenue. So that, six hundred thousand of that is from the new emergency management activities.
Okay. Okay, that, thanks. That, that covers all my questions in that area.
Absolutely.
That also helps out, sent that huge number, that risky squad number.
Yeah, it's a big one.
Yeah, that's, that's the majority of it right there.
Yeah.
Is the, um. projected billing, revenue recovery.
Yeah, that's harder to compare since it moves around so much.
Yeah, cause you just don't, you know. Yeah, I mean, that's basically, that's basically fifty percent of the request. So.
I was just looking here at some figures on, um, from twenty eighteen on machinery and tool tax. It was forty-seven, three, forty-six. This year's a hundred, this budget cycle is a hundred and ninety-five, seven, fifty-eight. Now I know why I got so many people calling to me and screaming about this.
Uh, well, I don't know if there has been a significant rate change in between those years, but what that number is based off of is the machinery and, um, tools book value.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I've, I've had quite a few businesses.
Well, it's, so Laura's, Laura's talked to us about some of that. There hasn't been a rate change, but there were a lot of things that she found that were supposed to be built that weren't in the past, so.
Well, that's understandable too.
That revenue, she, she's given us updates. Yeah. A lot, yeah.
Pretty good increase over five years.
Guys were just waiting on my.
Yeah, I don't see them yet.
I believe they're here.
They're here.
James, right now.
Good afternoon. Is this my chair?
Yes, sir.
Wow. Uh, okay, good. Well, good, good afternoon, everyone. Um, my name is, do I just get started?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I'm Ron Jenkins and I represent Virginia logging businesses and, uh, we have forest products, mills and, and other types of businesses as well in our association. It's a trade association and, um, so first thank you for allowing, uh, this opportunity. Uh, I hope today I can focus on a few areas that we have probably talked about before, but without being too repetitive. And try to bring some light to, uh, these areas and hopefully would ultimately convince you to. To, uh, that, that, what we're asking for is an exemption from personal property taxes and or tools and machinery taxes. Uh, that is in the state code now and is listed as an option, as you know, just like agriculture, farming, traditional farming. And so, uh, that has been our goal. That's what we're here for today is to ask for that. Um, and so I might focus just a bit on how do we really get here today? What, what brought us to this point? Uh, I've been with the VLA for about, uh, since twenty fifteen. And when we first started, when I first started, there was a lot of discussion going on and among the board about this, uh, subject. And, you know, they've kind of felt like that, uh, when you look at the code of Virginia, you see a variety of references there. A lot of references to silviculture or, or forest harvesting and, and forest management in the agriculture sector. So there are certain already code sections. So I'm thinking maybe that when, I, I think the agricultural exemption came about in the state code somewhere around seventy, nineteen seventy-nine or nineteen eighty. It's my guess, they probably just didn't, I know VLA was not in existence then, so there may not have been a voice to just, uh, push that or to talk about that among the group. Because when we did start talking for a number of years with the Virginia Farm Bureau and others, they all agreed that this was, uh, this was a, should have been in there and that they agreed. Under Wayne Pryor told me once, he was the president of Virginia Farm Bureau, that yes, he has forest crops and they are just in his mind, the same as other crops. So that's kind of led to, let's try a bill. We, of course, we had a legislator, uh, and they, uh, moved it through. And everyone in the House of Delegates and Senate and Governor and their staff who reviewed it, they all, all agreed. There was no opposition. And so I think it led us to this point, to get this to here, and that was kind of the basis for how we actually went about this. It wasn't just a over the night fly or the seat of the pants. It was really some thoughtful, uh, uh, thoughtful thoughts that went into this process. So I guess the other thing I'd like to kind of point out, which has already been pointing out in many of the localities where we have gone around the state. And that is. Where there are counties that are very focused on master planning in terms of their rural economy and keeping it robust. And strong and sustainable in the future, and that, that becomes a key area of their ma- master plan. Uh, they recognize forest and farms. Uh, those are key ingredients or anchors to a, uh, a rural economy that's robust and strong. And also one that's pleasing in the landscape. And what, you know, kind of has been pointed out, uh, through this is that in order to have in the forest section, a really healthy, robust forest and a strong economy. Is to have a strong management program, something where landowners who own most of it, at least eighty percent of the forest land is owned by private landowners. They have different interests. They have different objectives, but if they do this with some intensity in management, they're going to include harvesting and most likely. It is done. Their Department of Forestry now talks about somewhere around two hundred and fifty thousand acres across Virginia that are harvested each year. So we know it's a fair amount of harvesting and that just also keeps the forest healthy. The stronger the, the, and the health of the forest, then there's going to be forests for the future, which then goes to your master planning theme, that they were gonna have a strong economy. Uh, in the rural sector. I think that James Jewett, who is a Madison County supervisor, and I've given you his, uh, statement. I've had this said many ways, but Mr. Jewett actually took the time to put it in writing. And I think there's no better way than if I may just share one thing, that's the only thing I'll read, is this. And this came out of a, a larger statement that he made public, uh, after due consideration of, upon our appeal to the Madison County Board. And Mr. Jewett, I'll just pick up in the middle, he goes on to say that he, first he says that I've done my due diligence. I've checked into this. Because when he first, uh, my first, uh, feeling about him was that he was apprehensive. Now, after due diligence, he says by granting the off-road, and that is what we're asking for, not the trucks, uh, that loggers purchase, which still will come in. They'll still make those purchases and those revenues will still be coming in as long as, as much of other things. By granting the off-road logging equipment, personal property tax exemption provided under the Virginia code, we are making an investment in the logging community. That is facing escalating costs such as fuel and equipment. By granting the off-road exemption on county property tax, the county will support our local loggers to survive and prosper in the coming years. As a supply side proponent, I believe that this will generate more money for the county within the next five to ten years. As the logging businesses will be able, uh, to purchase more on-road vehicles, both for their businesses and for themselves personally. And it, it goes in, I hope you will read that, if you, read it again, it's just well done in the fact that he did so much homework to get to this conclusion on his own. But I've had many counties that refer to this, some just say, yes, this is part of it. And harvesting is very much a part. The thing is that like harvesting and forestry, what happens, uh, is that it likens it to agriculture in many ways. Of course, there are so many landowners that own forests and they're of all different ages. There are also all kinds of products that come from their forests. And then different ages that will produce those products and mature quicker than others. So what happens is that when, in most cases, a landowner will contract through a sealed bid for a logger. And the logger takes possession of those timber rights, the right to ingress and egress, and they will talk, uh, two years maybe for a contract to, to finish. They are totally responsible for that crop during that time. Whatever happens, the, well, hopefully, and certainly in a bid, a sealed bid situation, the owner has their money. Now it's upon the logger who is depending upon market prices and market conditions when they put that bid in. And I can tell you, and being in this business for this short amount of time, because I have been in forestry for over forty years, I guess, so. I'm not youngster in this business, but markets do change and here recently they have been changing way too rapidly for most people's. Uh, it would be tough for a young person to consider getting into this business because it is, it is, it is volatile. So I, I just want you to know that, um, it would help the master plan. And I'll give you a little bit about the logger's profile from my perspective, and that is if, it, it basically provides a sustainable, multiple sources of revenue. So it's not just this one revenue. And I know in the, in the, to a logger, the personal property taxes on their off-road equipment at the end of the year, it, it's, it's, it's amounting to a lot. For them, it may be small in terms of some budgets, but it does amount to a lot for them. And it could be the amount that would help longer stay in business, reinvest in the county, in their businesses which help the county. For instance, as, as Mr. Jewett reported out, they will be buying new, uh, new equipment. And when that happens, you're gonna get that tax revenue. They will continue to buy fuel and parts and services in the county. And they will hire local people. You're not likely to go out and put a resume out for a global headhunter to search for a logging, uh, uh, employee. So they're gonna come from the local community. And of course, that's another whole issue, just having technical people or people that are willing to stay in their communities and work. So they can, with the right kinds of markets, provide good employment and it can be really good for the county. And so the loss you have in your taxes, I think would be far offset by what you benefit for. And as Mr. Jewett said, in five or ten years, he thinks more money will be coming into county, and I hope for that too. So I think it, let's go then to the question is that I've been asked, why pick out? Why pick out logging over what about plumbing? What about electricians and all this? And I could just say, I think that we've, we're convinced ourselves, and I hope we can convince you, that forest harvesting and the way that it is done in most cases today is like agriculture. They take on the entire responsibility of that crop, that forest crop during that time. And anything can happen. They're subject to the loss, uh, from, it could be a ice storm, a snowstorm. It could be an insect or fungus that comes in, a fire that started off the side of the road and destroys that, that's on that logger. There is no insurance, by the way. There's no way to help offset that. The, the farm bill, which is coming out for the, the next new farm bill is gonna be up for input very soon. And, uh, the, the forest crop, you will see, has very little of any of those kinds of things that other crops have. It's a land-based crop, subject to all the environmental hazards. And also it's a source of essential food and fiber and wood, just like our crop says for food. There's a price model like no other you can imagine. I know when you are, you're, you have a regular crop of corn or beans and you can watch the commodity market and you can see where it is. And I think, I'm not an expert in this, but I know you can set some prices for the future. But loggers don't have that. They're dependent upon local mills. And if those mills are subject to changes in the market, the prices they paid the landowner, uh, for a two-year contract, that's subject to change very quickly and very easily. That just means that by the time they get ready to harvest and get everything prepared to harvest, that, those prices may not be the same. And they're certainly happening today. I can tell you, uh, with a hand on the Bible, that is absolutely happening today. And there's price, uh, adjustments up and down, but mostly down lately. And there are quotas that are coming out from many of the mills saying, you know, we just gotta slow down. Our inventory is high. I can't take anymore. But imagine yourself, if you were in that boat and your, your operation was depending upon a certain amount of production. That's kind of where the logger is today. It's a pretty tough business. And for most reports out of universities that do work on this, it's a very low margin, um, profit in this business to start with. And they cannot, I cannot set my price if I'm a logger. I can't say to you, if you're the mill owner, here's what I want, here's what I have in it, show you my invoice. The, it works just the opposite. The mill tells you what they'll give you for that product. But you're already stuck in it because you're the one that's made the investment in all of the equipment, uh, and that's going in and to get to where you are today. So you, you got a, you're rock, between a rock and a hard spot. So I would just say that I hope that if there's anything I can do or answer any questions that might help you make the decision to. Look at this as a favorable request and to make a decision to exempt all of the taxes that are normally associated with these personal properties and tools and machinery. Uh, I, I will, I will gladly answer them. Um, I think it's a good cause. Twenty-four other counties have also done that, and we would certainly appreciate your full support. And I thank you for your time again, once more.
Can you say off-road equipment?
Yes, sir.
I can be certain. I can see the single use of equipment.
Yes.
Get her, the loader.
Yep. Yep.
No bulldozer.
No bulldozer.
Yeah, bulldozers and trackos.
Yeah.
They can be loaded up and taken somewhere and, and I don't consider that.
Um, what we, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, that's a lot, what you're hitting on is a lot of the problems that other county commissioner revenues have been writing about is. It's not clear in most, even to the twenty-four that have approved it, where to draw the lines. And so they're having to argue essentially with the.
If you do, we gotta do some serious stipulation.
It's gotta be.
It's gotta be hard, rock solid work.
I could figure those three are skidder, both.
Man.
Color. I could set it in like a kind of. Basically, it's harvesting a crop.
Yes, sir.
No, no, those is in the skidners. I mean, those and loaders, trackos.
I think you hit on, you hit on another really important piece too, when you mentioned the harvesting, so. I'm not sure what we, what we do. So farm, our definition of farmer usually is someone who is farming their own land or land they've rent. They're harvesting for themselves. In this case, most of the lumber company, timber companies in Amelia, I don't see them doing it on their own. They're not raising the, the timber themselves. What do we do when it's a harvesting company? You know, or like a fertilizer company, Dexter? I mean, that's for the purpose of, but that's not a farm.
That's true. And, you know, I'm a farmer and I agree with seventy-five percent of what you said, but a farmer can't control the rain.
Right.
That don't affect the forestry as bad as it affects the crop. And I know we can book our crops and get a decent price, but we have no control over them input cost, just like you have no control over that diesel fuel. But we buying diesel fuel also.
I know you do.
So. You have a little bit more control over some things, a whole lot more than a farmer does. And I know that forestry is.
Yes, sir.
Right. So twenty-year minimum on.
Plan. At least, yes.
And all that. But. The, it's the si- matching on peas to peas or apples to apples or whatever, uh, there's a gray line in there. Well, there is a line right there.
That's what I'm saying, Dexter. I agree.
There's a line there.
Saying, there's no doubt in my mind, forestry is a crop and a product. I don't, I don't disagree with that. We're not at, this isn't really about that. That's not even the discussion today. It's whether these should count the same way as farming. Which is a pretty different. Pretty different, I think. Yeah.
So, yeah, no, no, okay. Well, I would just say that, um. We know what the, we, we went in with, uh, full understanding of what the code had and it's been in, had been in place when, before we started this process. And I think the way that most of the people that looked at it with us and got, where we got a bill, is that because the logger, in many cases, they take. Um, the possession of that, the timber rights, actually. I mean, they own and, and, and it's totally their responsibility. the timber rights, actually. I mean, they own and, and, and it's totally their responsibility. It's not maybe as absolute black and white as it, as you're talking about. I understand that completely. But when they do take that, and this isn't, this was never kind of filtered out at all. It's just that because there is this um obligation and then there is an accountability for it and their responsibility falls upon that logger during that entire contract. So what can happen, you say, I understand about the rain, I, the, all of the weather really affects logging. I have, we had a compli, I, we, we had an issue that just came up yesterday in, in another county. And we um, I was talking with the Virginia Department of Forestry about this, who inspected it. And he was telling me, this is an example for the rain. He said, because of the rain they've had, the logger had four different contracts going on at the same time. And he was constantly having to move equipment from one site to the other just so he could keep production and keep revenue coming into his business because it got too wet and the running was bad. So in a way, it can cease the logging operation. Because we are subject to the uh civil culture water quality law, which means we're out, someone's inspecting us. We have to report the uh, the harvest and then we get inspected on a regular basis. Once at first, once in the middle again, and then at the end. So we, we have to be very careful because of the water quality. So water and rain is a very important factor to us.
Okay, good point. But as for that gentleman, that gentleman and myself.
Yes, sir.
We've all sold timber. So we know what the process is going through, but what you just said is very true. But lack of rain or too much rain, you're not going to lose them trees. That farmer can lose that crop. And he has zilch. Hey, diesel fuel bill.
I think, I think you're, I, I would, I would give you absolutely a hundred, you're a hundred percent A plus on that. That's right. But where it may differ, i- and that's where I think the gray area comes in. Because it, it, I think that the folks that looked at it with us, including the legislators, said, and this is enough of an agricultural, it is a crop. We first agree with you on that. You do take possession of it uh generally. And if you're in a fixed sealed bid, you've got the, the payments gone to the landowner. Now you're responsible. But where I think uh we might look at this a little differently is that the markets, I know I, I, I realize you don't have so much control of it. And market pricing is one. You're looking at futures, you're looking at demand. We are looking at this every single day. I know you, you may not believe me, but I can, I can bring ten loggers in here and they will verify that every day they'll get a price a text. Now, it's not even a phone call anymore from a mill. By the way, um, price is down a dollar per unit. Or here, uh, we're taking away the fuel adjustment uh support. Uh, oh, by the way, you've got six vehicles, and this is a true story. Six thirty in the morning, uh, uh, one of my uh members calls and said, Ron, I, I don't know what to do. I think he was just frustrated. I have six trucks on the way over to the mill. They've said, they can't take any today. Now, this is happening all the time. So I hear.
Oh, and that happened, and that happened with rain too, the same.
I'm not sure that would apply to.
Our tax rates are lower than all the surrounding counties, so they're not going to leave us.
If I may, to your point, sir, um, and I apologize for not remembering your name.
No, I don't know how you remember all of us.
You know, I think the definition was beaten around by attorneys at the legislative services. Our, our, uh, our full, our, our House of Delegates and senators and the governor knew this, as well as the estate agency, VACO uh knew this. And where they, you know, it's not completely apples to apples, but it's enough closeness to it. And because the, we, we do operate differently in the markets a little bit. We are subject to the weather, uh, you know, and, and it does affect us. That is where I think they drew the line for us. So that's how we got it into state code, but it became an option for localities to make that final decision.
Yeah.
And it's just like farming. So I, I respect that. But I hope that you'll see that, that, that I think it's a pretty good case that it is indeed uh a farming operation. The, the only thing is that, and I don't know what will happen in the future, I have no more, I have no control over that. But loggers do need some sort of break. And I know some have already gone out of business this year. I know, even I don't know the farming part as well as you, okay? I'm just putting that on the table. I know logging and I know that they're having a tough time. I know they're having a really tough time. Even the mil- mills admit that. So we need to protect those loggers. They're part of that whole environment in your community. And I think that you'll see that by supporting them, they will be around. Hopefully the markets say good and your land use continues to support uh agriculture and forestry. Then you'll have a healthy rural economy in the future.
Everybody's having a tough time.
Yes.
And it's just beginning.
Yeah, and it's going to get worse.
I do understand that, too. I know, I think we could.
This business is going under every day.
Do you have figures for the counties, how much the logging, personal property tax, or vehicles to the local counties?
Well.
Just the log now, nothing else.
On the off-road?
On the, on the off-road, you know, how much does that a lawyer all have at, I mean, or the surrounding county?
That's who I would, I, I would always go to.
I thought you may have had it, but how many counties around here, their, their personal property tax?
I can tell you this, the largest, what I, what's come to my attention during meetings like this is Charlotte County. They said that they had five hundred thousand dollars that went into that uh from just and that we never get, get to the point where there was, was it inclusive of trucks and, and the, and the title equipment as well as the off-road? I was not sure about that. But that's the biggest amount that I've heard. Yeah, they are. Uh, Pennsylvania was the very first county to um adopt this. And this is kind of where this started. Our, our, one of our members worked closely with the Commissioner of Revenue, County Administrator, Farm Bureau, and that's where it kind of got started. Uh, I don't remember the exact amount, but Pennsylvania, it, it's usually small compared to the entire budget of a county. And um.
Yeah, that's what our commissioner was trying to pull and for that same, for the same reason.
Well, I've heard, I've been told that, yeah. And see, I don't keep records like that. My, my goal is more uh talking before people and, and just administrate, uh, running.
You don't often keep a record in such a way when it's not necessary at the time. So there's not been a reason to, to break it out, so we just don't have a way.
Yes, and I've been told that. It must be a fairly common element throughout the, all localities.
We've, we've heard this several times.
Yeah.
Twice in front of us. Now see, Lord, Lord, because anyway, you could tell us how many skitters, loaders and cutters are in the counties up?
Are they even currently taxed? How do we know who has what?
I am not sure the number that there are, and I was looking back through my emails where y'all are talking. I think I estimated this two years ago and I think it was fifty-three thousand dollars worth of revenue. Fifty-two thousand, um, and that's act like the tax amount that we get. Um, we get a report from them on machinery and tools and then, you know, we take a percentage cost of what they pay for it and depreciate it out. Um, so I don't have an actual count, but I went in, when I did this a couple of years ago and pulled all of our logging companies and totaled up all of their stuff.
But that was our one road stuff, track hogs.
So that actually goes on the um, on the real estate, or I mean, on the personal property book. But the machinery and tools is what we would pull in, that's the off-road.
That they have.
Okay. May I ask a question? Was the fifty-two thousand just for the off-road? Did I hear that correctly?
I believe so, but I, I couldn't locate it to find.
Uh, I just had pulled that one up. That's, that's what you, that was your best estimate that it was. And you caveated the challenges with estimating it, but that was your estimate based on off-road.
Right. And so that was something else I was going to say that you had mentioned is a lot of commissioners are really concerned with the way that it's worded as what other things would come into a but into play and what other people could then say, well, you know, we're using this for an off-road purpose and you're exempting it for the loggers, so.